The planning board for January 26, 2012 is now in session. Anyone wishing to address the board this evening will need to fill out a green sheet and hand them as ask you. When you approach the podium, would you please state your name and address? Ms. Washington, would you call the rule?
Certainly. Ms. Remark?
Here.
Mr. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Bohan is absent. Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Washington, here. Mr. Hoitzma?
Here.
Ms. Benjamin?
Here.
Mr. Fishback? Mr. Neal?
Here.
And Ms. LaSage is absent this evening. Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Hurt!
Mr. Hurt!
I apologize.
And they were all in order, too. Next we'll have the approval of the minutes for December 15. Are there any additions or changes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Next is the approval of minutes for December 22, a special meeting that we had. Any changes, corrections to that?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ready for new items? Ms. Washington?
Item number four, large-scale comprehensive plan amendment.
I'll ask.
Large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, Terragona Shops DEV 2011-087.
May we hear from staff? Mr. Whitnauer?
Thank you, Chairman Moore. Good evening. My name's Tom Whitnauer. And I see there's a lot of audience members, probably from the Highlands neighborhood. Thank you for attending. Sorry my back is to you all. As well as Mr. Paul Hollab Jr., the developer. I want to try to frame a few things before we get started, to try to avoid some confusion and getting tangled up in things. As I see it, there's four groups at the table tonight: the owner, developer, Mr. Hollab, the Highlands neighborhood, staff, even a school system representative. Two groups that'll play a role later are the city commission members and state review agencies, as far as our comprehensive plan amendment goes. I guess I would ask, with kind of so many players and thoughts that would, you know, kind of keep cool heads and try to work together, hopefully we can come out with a good resolution to this project that has been proposed. Mr. Hollab purchased this property with the intent of doing a low-intensity retail business. When he came into the planning department, at some point before or after the purchase, we informed him that the future land use map, which is a land use map in our comprehensive plan, currently doesn't allow a retail use in that future land use area. And there's also a neighborhood policy. Our comprehensive plan has neighborhood policies. Some of you may have been involved with those, that kind of set direction, policy direction, on what's to take place in different pockets of the city. So, I'll cover those two parts. Then later Dennis Rosick with our department will cover the rezoning. However, it's important that the large-scale amendment, really this part has to be approved before we can even consider it for rezoning. They're two completely different steps. Some of the information we generate on each, such as traffic generation, are completely different than we do with rezoning or site plan review. So, pretty much try to keep your review and discussion for the first part to the land use, and then we'll move on to the rezoning. Mr. Hollab's request, as I've mentioned, is comprised of two parts. I'll go into more detail on each one. But the first one is a large-scale map amendment, changing the future land use map designation from office transition to low-intensity commercial for 2.47 acres. The second part's amending issues and policies in Neighborhood M to allow commercial development in the area that's within this Neighborhood M area between Nova and Clyde Morris on ISB. Okay, so the first one, and to familiarize yourself, I'm sure you're all familiar with it by now, is on the corner of Center and West International Speedway Boulevard. It's a combination of lots that whether Mr. Hollab or someone else has assembled over the years. That's the site looking from across the street. And you see Daytona State College across the street to the north, to the south, and the east is the Highlands subdivision or neighborhood, with houses directly across the street from Cordova Avenue. As well as on the east side immediately on ISB is a single-family home. And then on the west is Mainland High School. We won't go into this, but the next part of the application will with Dennis. The current zoning is residential, R1A. A wide area of this part of town is actually residential due to the school across the street, Daytona State College is allowed in the residential area, and then the Highlands neighborhood behind it. The proposed, the future land use is currently office transition. This is the definition of what's allowed in office transition from our comprehensive plan. It's an area primarily for office, public schools, and multifamily uses. The floor area ratio shall not exceed three, or the residential density shall not exceed 40 dwelling units per acre. So, that doesn't include retail, and that's the reason he's seeking to designate this as low-intensity commercial. Low-intensity commercial's definition is an area primarily for retail, personal services, office, and restaurants. The floor area ratio shall not exceed one, or the residential density shall not exceed 10 dwelling units per acre. So, what the FAR is, the floor area ratio for people in the audience, I might not be familiar with that, it's a unit of intensity on a site. So, this is actually a decrease in allowed density from three to one if this land use is approved. And it allows retail in the designation Mr. Hollab's applying for. He can't get approval for this unless he has approval for another amendment to the comprehensive plan, which is a text amendment under Neighborhood M. In our comprehensive plan, there's multiple neighborhoods identified with color coding. This neighborhood, Highlands, falls within M, and that's an enlargement of it. And then now we're back to the site. The area and the part of Neighborhood M policy that's in conflict currently states, and I'll just get right to the policy. Let me run down to that. The existing text. I think this is advancing. Let me make sure it's not doing that on its own, because it skipped ahead a few. The existing policy since it's a little small says, "This segment of West ISB," now this is everything, let me go back one or two slides. This is everything on ISB from Clyde Morris to Nova Road, and you can see Mr. Hollab's site in yellow right there. So, what that area is described in Neighborhood M that he seeks an amendment to currently says, "This segment of West ISB shall be designated as a scenic thoroughfare. Future rezoning of this land shall be limited to large parcel office developments, and a scenic setback will be maintained." So, the part where it says, "Limited to large parcel office developments," since it doesn't include commercial, wouldn't allow him to get approval even for the land use change. So, when you're reviewing this, you've got to kind of weigh both the land use map and this neighborhood policy. The city, the city staff isn't going to make a recommendation on this Neighborhood M amendment because it is a policy decision, and we try to stay out of those areas. Let's see. Okay. Probably small for everybody to see, but what I tried to do, let me just quickly say, the part that Mr. Hollab wants to add's "and commercial" in the policy. When I reviewed Mr. Hollab's work, there's an issue that's a paragraph before the policy, and it describes this area as follows. "West ISB is developed primarily as single-family with deep landscaped front yards. This contributes to the attractive image of this segment of West ISB. There have been requests to rezone this area to more intensive uses." Okay, that's what it says now. So, it describes it as primarily single-family with deep landscape yards. And the existing policy after that says you're allowed to rezone it, or you're, you can, we can consider rezonings to large office, large parcel office. And I thought those two together didn't really work. You know, why wouldn't it if it's going to lead in with it's primarily single-family, not just say, "Single-family only is allowed." And then when I, you know, I'm familiar with that area, it surprised me that it described it primarily as single-family. So, staff wants to add in an amendment, not only to that lead-in issue, but also to Mr. Hollab's policy. The reason for that is, in staff's opinion, it's not primarily single-family, it has other uses. So, what this image here shows is kind of going down the road, you're, first you hit Mainland High School, takes up, you know, a large width of ISB, then you have the site, remaining single-family homes, the Children's Advocacy Center, and a bank, and then Tuscaloosa What staff would suggest is a more accurate description of the issue first that leads into that policy. And what I'm going to say the next two things would still allow Mr. Hollab's project to take place and the land use amendment. I would add the text that's, why is this changing? Let's see. Let me go back to that and put this thing down. Okay, so I would rewrite it to describe the stretch of road like this. "With the exception of Mainland High School, West ISB is developed with a low density of mixed uses comprised of single-family homes, the Terragona Tower, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, a bank, the Children's Advocacy Center, and Tuscaloosa Park. This contributes to the attractive image of this segment of West ISB. There have been requests to rezone this area to more intensive uses." So, I think that's a fine lead-in. The way I propose to amend the policy is as follows. And what it does, in my opinion, Mr. Hollab's insertion of just the word "and commercial" might mislead future planners and developers to think that large parcel, commercial developments would be allowed. So, I have added a little more description to that, so it reads as follows. "This segment of West ISB shall be designated a scenic thoroughfare. Future rezoning of this land shall be limited to large parcel office and low-intensity commercial developments, while a scenic setback shall be maintained." Okay, so that concludes my part in the policy, the Neighborhood M policy. And as far as the land use change that I showed you on the maps, what staff does, we take multipliers for things like water and sewer service, traffic, and we generate very crude calculations, I'll admit, but they're, this is the way that planning and comp plan amendments are reviewed. We compare the maximum of what's allowed on the site today under its current land use, and then what could be allowed if the land use designation's amended to something else. In this case, the water and sewer drops significantly because the allowed area or intensity we talked about goes from three to one, so that brings it down. Traffic goes up because it's expected, even though you could have a two- or three-story office building perhaps now, when you compare that to a one-story retail across the whole site, it goes up significantly. It's over 1,000 trips, average daily trips. The net has the effect with some of the reviews that we're subject to, to coordinate with DOT and some others. This segment of ISB is called constrained, and that's a term that we're allowed to use when we recognize that it's widened as much as it's ever going to be, that we want to commit to. There happens to be phantom trips on that road that's causing that from previously approved projects that may not have been built yet. Our office talked to the Metropolitan Planning Organization planner, and, because we know when we send this amendment off, they're going to get a copy, and they're going to say, "Oh, you went over the threshold. Let's talk about that. You're over 1,000, so we need to take a closer look at that." They explained that that's a current, that's kind of a local issue. They always assumed there would be development on that site. In fact, this is going to be less intense than they had thought it would be. So, that's really not going to flag anything. Later with the rezoning, we can talk about traffic a little bit more. But with all that said, staff, let me read my recommendations. And then we'll hear from the developer, property owners in Highlands, the school, planning board, and then we'll take questions. As far as the future land use amendment, "With the exception of meeting approval of the proposed text amendment, staff finds that the requested large-scale amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan, does not represent urban sprawl, and will decrease the demand on available water and sewer. As far as the proposed text amendment, staff offers no recommendation on the policy issue and text raised by the applicant's proposed text amendment." Okay. I can take questions, or let the next, as I said-
Board, do you have any questions of staff at this point?
Just a couple things on the traffic. You said office use somehow is more intense in traffic. Did I misunderstand that?
Well, I misstated it, but retail has a more intense demand on traffic than office.
Okay. So, intensity is, that you were talking about is just measured in the one thing, water and sewer?
All three, and we could even do solid waste, but when I compare with-
But I mean in terms of a decrease. Traffic is a definite increase.
Traffic's an increase, water and sewer's a decrease.
Okay.
It's also not, it's apples to oranges. The current land use allows an FAR of three with the office, but it only allows an FAR of one with the retail. But the amount of trips per thousand square feet is so much more for retail than it is office, it is a net increase.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Did I understand that a traffic impact analysis will have to be prepared?
Not as far as this land use amendment goes. We're comfortable that when this goes through, the DOT will take a look at it, and they'll put in writing what they indicated to us verbally that they were going to be in, you know, to approve it.
So, there would be two separate votes that would be required on this?
Right. Now, that was their verbal, their verbal answer. I can't commit that that'll be their final, but that's what they indicated to us.
On the, just on this one item, there's two different votes. Yes, Mr. McGinnis?
I have one technical. The change in the setback from will to shall, could we get an explanation of the will-to-shall change?
It just makes it more mandatory. There's no question about it. We really want to maintain that.
We want to make sure that that happens.
The shall is more mandatory than will.
Legally, is there a difference?
I don't believe there's a difference, but shall sounds more powerful, but they're the same term.
Okay.
So, that's the intent is for it to be-
We didn't want to have anything unclear.
Okay. Actually, I did just have one other thing. When you were saying primarily single-family home and making the case that it's not, did you do that based on, what, land size for each of the uses, or?
Frontage, since it's really described as what someone would see going down that segment of International Speedway Boulevard, the frontage and that diagram that kind of labels each one.
So, you just did it based on the actual land that it occupies, not on the, okay.
Right, yes.
Thank you.
Not acreage.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Paul Hollab, and members of the board. My name is Paul Hollab, and I am the managing member for Speedway Investors and the applicant for the items before you tonight. You've heard most of it from your staff as it relates to traffic. If this board deems that we need a full traffic study, we have no issue with that. We met with FDOT, preliminary talks with them resulted in that a traffic, a full traffic analysis would not be required. That may change as we go through the process. If this board feels more comfortable with a full report, we'll be glad to process one and have it certainly before staff to review and before this item goes to city commission. Our initial meeting with DOT was for support of our access at ISB and our westbound left turn, and we have applications pending now for those items. I did not know that the neighborhood policy went to Nova Road, so as I inventoried what's out there today, there was a total of seven homes between Terragona and Clyde Morris that exist, and there used to be some older homes on the subject property which were demolished before I purchased it. And many of the homes are well-kept, but they certainly don't fall into the category of your policy with large landscaped, deep lots fronting along ISB. We went through the process with staff, oh, I would say since roughly September, October, designing the plans, and we know that designing the plans were at risk, that it required several approvals before any site plan was going to be formally approved by staff. But we felt like it would give this board and subsequent review a definitive idea of exactly what we want to build there with built-in restrictions, which will, you will see as the rezoning item comes up next. We looked at this from a office professional use, and my traffic engineer's here tonight, and he will speak to that matter. We could fit approximately 40,000 square feet of office on this property with the required parking, and when you look at office use and traffic and trip generations, the gap between low-intensity retail and office is very minimal. And he'll speak to that and give you more information on that. Unfortunately, we've tried to market this property and talk to office tenants and have not gathered any interest. We have a great deal of office inventory that has been vacant in Volusia County since 2007, going on five years now, and the market simply is not there for office professional. One day, many years ago, there was a bank proposed for this site before I was involved through, and of course, the banks are simply not expanding in today's market, or if they are, it's very limited. So, we explored the office use before we came into the city and with our plans and our request for low-intensity commercial. I believe that as staff indicated, our request meets the requirements, are consistent with the comprehensive plan, and I have no issue with the revisions that staff has suggested to the texts. I think those are good revisions, and we have no issue with them. We have nothing, we have no intentions other than low-intensity retail for this site. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Board, any questions? Mr. Hollab?
Yes, Mr. Hollab, you said that you met with the FDOT. Who did, who did you meet with, planners or who?
We met with Richard Whiskerman and I believe Chris Kearns.
Chris Kearns, okay. And you said that FDOT said they would not require a traffic impact analysis?
At that time, I don't believe a traffic study was required, but I'll let Target Dervish answer that. He's the traffic engineer.
Okay. Because Chris Kearns said something different today when I spoke with him. And I think maybe the confusion might be that was just a conceptual meeting, is that my understanding?
Again, I'll let Mr. Dervish-
Okay, that might be-
But I, it was a conceptual meeting.
Okay.
It was more for access-
Okay.
And the access issues. But in any event, certainly if DOT requires it, we're going to submit it.
If this board would prefer it, even if your code does not specifically require it, we'll
be more than happy to provide one. I think at the end of the day, with a traffic, a full traffic impact analysis, the results may be similar, but you gather more information.
Okay. And then also, you're commenting on a great deal of office inventory. It seems to me, just as someone driving around, there's also a great deal of retail inventory that's out. I mean, you can look right across the street at the Kmart Shopping Center, or go right down ISB, or down Granada where I was recently. So, what makes, did, and actually, I, you, I imagine, I think you've been here a while, you have other retail inventory? I mean, how full are you and?
Well, actually, in a sponsor like the Kmart facility, we bought a 1979 Kmart in Port Orange-
Uh-huh.
And spent a considerable amount of money renovating it, and if you go by today, we just finished recently, it looks like a brand-new center. And we've leased a great deal of that out. TGI Fridays just opened, Bell's occupied, and we have Remax Realty and several other leases pending. So, and I think the same thing would be accomplished with a renovation to the ISB Kmart in due time. We do have some retail vacancy, but with this particular location, due to its proximity to the college, to the high school, to Halifax Hospital, to Embry-Riddle, not to mention the 40,000, 40,000 to 50,000 trips a day that pass by this property, it is a niche parcel that has attracted a great deal of interest over the last several months from national tenants such as Starbucks and several of the yogurt shops and the hair, personal service type uses. We've also had some interest from a credit union and those type. So, we have had some office professional inquiries too, and there probably will be a mix as there is with several of our centers. We have an eye doctor with a retail eye component in our Tuscany Shops, and we have Space Coast Credit Union in one of our centers. So, we'll have a mix of office professional and retail in this center. But it's attracted a great deal of attention because of its proximity and because of the schools and the hospital and what's there. So, we believe that this will be a very successful center, and it will get built. And we have every intention, if we receive the approvals, to go forward, build it, manage it, retain ownership, as we have with several of our other centers.
Thank you. I was going to say, I did just want to follow up with his traffic.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, would you?
My name is Target Dervish, traffic planning and design, 535 Versailles Drive, Mainland, Florida. I did not attend the DOT meeting, but my associate did. It was a conceptual meeting. Access was discussed in detail. At that time, they did, Chris Kearns was there, obviously. He'd indicated that a study would not be required, but that doesn't mean that one will not be required during permitting. When Mr. Hollab submits a permit for his connection-
Right.
A permit, a traffic study-
It's required for the permit, okay.
-will be required and one will be provided. So, we're not dodging the issue.
Okay. I just wanted to be really clear, because if you actually do go forward with this and you then have to do a permit, it is required. So, I didn't want to give the-
And staff was concerned about that. We provided to the staff what we call a traffic assessment.
Right. No, I'm talking FDOT. I didn't want there to be-
FDOT. You haven't seen anything from us. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you please fill out a green form? And I'm going to ask you to-
Any other questions?
If you ask me. Thank you. We'll hear from the audience now. Anyone speaking for? I have one that's for and against. Mr. Nicholson, did you?
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. I wish you had one that's halfway. I like the project. It looks attractive. I'm not opposed to having this kind of retail in that location. Although as a former teacher, I'm not quite sure. I like it next to the high school, and I would like to see an ant track where the kids will be coming, cutting through into the building and back, because I'm sure that's what's going to happen. However, my main question, or one of several, is historic tree preservation. I've noticed that in this packet there- I've noticed that in this packet, they're not required to report on anything about historic trees, and Embry-Riddle has like, they're cutting down 300 trees, blah, blah, blah. So the historic trees here are of no consideration to the city?
Historic tree is not an issue on the land use amendment.
Okay, so, and then go on the second packet.
It would be on the rezone.
Okay. All right. And on page five, there are seven site plan review criteria, and they fail on seven out of the seven. So they're not meeting any of it. So the scenic setback is cut from thirty to twenty.
I think you're, you're.
You're on the second.
You're on the next item.
Second one, okay.
You're on the next item.
All right, gotcha. Right.
While you're up there, you're also marked against, so do you want to go ahead and?
Well, the against is because of the trees and the residents behind it. It's all trees.
That's in the second. Okay, Mr. Robert Kelly. And on deck is Sarah Lee Morrissey.
Hello. My name is Robert Kelly. I live at 1110 Loomis Avenue in the Daytona Highlands, and I'm president of the Daytona Highlands Neighborhood Association. I'm here to tell you that the Neighborhood Association has looked carefully at this proposal, and we are opposed to, to any change in the land use that's, that's on the books now. We think that the city of Daytona has it just right in capturing the, the language about the scenic character of the neighborhood, the historic character of the neighborhood. We are very much concerned, just in listening about, listening to the discussion today, but, but in our own discussion about the, the increases in traffic. And I need to tell you that my story is, is kind of an unusual one. Do I just have three minutes? I haven't noticed that, that timer going for anyone else who's spoken yet.
Owen Stark's.
I'm here representing the Neighborhood Association, and I hope I'll have time to make my points. My story is an unusual one, I think, in this area, because I started out as a homeowner in Ormond Beach. I've lived in this community for over 20 years and aspired to and, and achieved my dream of moving into this neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood. It's filled with people who are proud to live in Daytona Beach, who, who value the, the, the landscaping, the quiet nature of that neighborhood, and we think that this will do some damage. And I need to tell you that this is a neighborhood that has been stressed in recent history. In 2004, thereabouts, when Mainland High School was developed, they created access on Central Avenue, and that has really resulted in a deterioration in the quality of life for a number of people, especially who live on Cordova, near Central, who live on Magnolia and that area. It has increased the traffic in that neighborhood, and we've been coping with that. More recently, we have, have dealt with the halving of the, the buffer zone that existed for that neighborhood, between that neighborhood and Embry-Riddle. And, and I guess I just need to tell you that, that these folks who live in, in the Highlands are very, very fiercely proud and, and love this neighborhood, and we really are very guarded against further deterioration of the quality of life in this neighborhood. The, the project that's proposed, and I don't see any other way it could be done, has access right onto Central. So, you know, again, you just, you just increase the level of noise, you increase the level of activity, you decrease the desirability of that area for someone who just wants to live in peace. So we, we are opposed to, to changing the map, or change, opposed to changing the plan. We think that the policy is just about right. The maximum use, as we understand it, is, is office, transitional office. We're.
I'm off, but I think I probably have made, I've probably made my points. If you can.
Pardon me?
If you're limited to another minute, go ahead.
Okay. I think I'll stop right there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Wait, can I ask him a question?
Yes, certainly.
Could you explain what you're talking about with the Embry-Riddle buffer? Is there a buffer somewhere else?
There is, there, historically. My mic went off again.
No, it's on, it's on.
It's on.
Historically, there's been a buffer between that neighborhood and Embry-Riddle, Aeronautical University, and, and in fact, there was a covenant made with, with folks in the neighborhood that, that said that that would be in perpetuity. The exact language is in perpetuity, that that would be in reserve, that land there. Last, a couple of years ago, there was an overturn of the agreement that existed in perpetuity. That buffer zone was cut in half. Embry-Riddle developed some, some ball fields, and they're, they're creating a road back in there. And, and all of that really is, is informs our neighborhood's disposition toward further development around there. We have, have really experienced some, some incursions on, on what we value.
Okay.
And, and I just need for you to know, this is a very strongly held opinion in the neighborhood. And I think that it's in the city's best interest where you've got a neighborhood that is, in fact, it's one of the things that's right about Daytona. It's filled with people, homeowners, who love the place. We like living in Daytona Beach, but, but there is, you know, I don't know where the tipping point is in the neighborhood before it becomes rental properties and it becomes more transient kinds of things, but I can tell you that, that it is very stressful to those of us who live there and love the place.
Mr. Kelly, how many homes are in the neighborhood or, or members do you have in your association?
I don't think I could answer that. There may be someone in the neighborhood who could do a better job of that. I really don't know how many homes, but it's a pretty extensive neighborhood. It runs from, from ISB back to Museum. It runs as far west as Skyview and Central, and runs as far east as Seneca and right up to, to Terragana, or, excuse me, the Tuscaloosa Park.
Okay.
Several hundred.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
Uh-huh. Ms. Morrissey?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Sarah Lee Morrissey. I'm with the Volusia County School District. My address is 3750 Olson. I have to say, I was not going to speak on this item. I was only going to speak to your next item. Mr. Hollab was gracious enough to meet with me Monday to review the site plan, and I was only going to speak to that, but after reading the staff report and spending some time thinking about this issue, I, I can't help myself. I, I have got to speak. And part of that is, is history, and some of you may know, but I have been and am a professional planner, just as your staff is, and I've been here for 25 years practicing. I, I have and still do participate on a number of visioning and planning committees, and I was here when the original policy was written. And, and I just have to remind you, because I know your staff has not been here that long, and I want to remind you of the why, and I want to remind you about what we went through as a school district for Mainland High School. The reason there's a specific policy in your plan was for two reasons. One was to protect the Highlands neighborhood, recognizing some of what's already been said, and the other neighborhood that's east of what was Daytona Beach College, now DSC. Also, it was recognized where retail was desired, and ISB is stripped out in many, many locations, and it was not at the time the plan came forward in this area. This was a very different area. It was institutional and residential, and so the policy was written for a very specific reason. And that was to recognize an image that was different and to help enhance that image. And that does relate to the redevelopment of Mainland High School. Again, your staff is, is new, and they weren't here when we went through the redevelopment of Mainland High School. I think some of these neighbors were here, and we met with them numerous times. We also met with Daytona Beach College, Embry-Riddle, Halifax Hospital, the staff that was here at the time, our school advisory council, the faculty. I mean, the number of meetings that we had before anything happened to Mainland High School was numerous, and it was not a simple decision to just redevelop on that site. Mainland High School did not have frontage on ISB. I hope you'll bear with me, please. We did not have frontage on ISB. There was a proposal for Walgreens. There were houses, just like there are houses that Mr. Hollab recognized, and there was some pressure on the school district to move Mainland High School west, recognizing the western growth in this community. But one of the things that kept being said, and it was a result of how many visioning and planning meetings have gone on in the history of this community, was what does this say about our community? And what this segment of ISB says is that education is important, healthcare is important, and the architectural statements that the hospital has made, that DSC has made, and now that we, the school district, have made by redeveloping and buying property on ISB so that we front on ISB, our address is now ISB for Mainland High School. It didn't used to be. This was recognized as a gateway entrance to this community, and it expresses the values that so many people think are important. And so I want to remind you of those things. I take exception to two statements that were, that were made, and, and both of which are in the staff report. The proposed staff policy starts off with, with the exception of Mainland High School, Speedway Boulevard is developed with a low-density blah, 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 and they recognize all the other uses. And then it says, this contributes to the attractive image of this segment of ISB. I'm sorry, but Mainland High School contributes to the attractive image of ISB, and I take exception to the fact that it's being excluded. Secondly, the traffic, and I know Mr. Hollab and I spent some time talking about traffic, and I, it certainly will come up on your next item. This is a land use change. This isn't just about this project. ISB is, is a nightmare, even with good planning. If you're going to make this land use change, it's not just for this piece of property. It's for all the other properties that can be developed for retail now, and there needs to be a look at traffic. There's not another turn lane proposed here. It next down at Central. You have lots of pedestrian issues. You've got a big median. It, traffic needs to be looked at if you're going to move forward and intensify the uses. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mr. Mathney, Chuck Mathney?
I'll be brief. My name is Chuck Mathney. I'm a resident of the Daytona Highlands. Our property is located at 1143 Orange Avenue. We've owned the property since the early eighties. I would like to go on record as being opposed to Mr. Hollab's request. The planning board changed the future land use map designation from office transition to low-density commercial. I think it's fair to say that the property was given its current designation as office transition for a good reason, because that was and still is what worked for our neighborhood. I also think it's fair to say that the property in question was not given the designation of low-intensity commercial for a good reason. And again, it's because it was not and still does not apply and work for our neighborhood. I would also like to state, the only thing I haven't heard here yet this evening is, I would like to go on record as being opposed to anything being built on the property in question that will require Central Avenue to be used as either an entrance or take out there. Guys, it is unbelievable. You go out in the morning, you got people lined up in the D cell lane trying to get to the, to the college. You got people lined up in the D cell lane trying to get to Mainland. You go out there at 3:00 in the afternoon, and you can find 25 cars parked between Cordoba and Central, mom and dad picking up kid. It's happening. That's what's going on in our neighborhood. And, you know, we're, we're here simply to say, enough's enough. You know, we're all going to have to vacate the area because there's going to be no quality of life left there. They spoke about the, the 500-foot buffer. I mean, it was held in perpetuity for, for years in the county council because it happened to be Embry-Riddle. We were no match to fight Embry-Riddle. We've lost half of our buffer zone. The buffer zone was there for a reason. It was there to shield the sounds from the airport and all the other things that are going on. We can sit on our back porch on Orange Avenue and hear the music, the, the plays out there. So this is just another intrusion. You guys have made some good decisions, and I think the way you've got this plan designated is the proper way to have it designated. And I don't believe a reason to change it is because we have people that have bought property there with a plan to do something that probably they knew they couldn't do when they bought the property and assumed because we need a tax base and economic development that we would jump through hoops and the Highlands residents would be put in the back seat again. So we're asking for your consideration to, please, help us out. Let's do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Phyllis Hogan, and I live at 1112 Balboa Avenue. I've been a resident of the city of Daytona since 1955, and I've been a resident of the Daytona Highlands for 50 years. I would like to voice my objection and concern over the proposed large-scale comp plan amendment. I know that you know a lot about our neighborhood. Seems like we're, we're always, you know, objecting to another attempt to encroach on, on the quality of our life since its inception in the mid-'20s. Now, more, in more recent years, we've battled at least twice over the Terragana Arch itself. We've battled a couple of times with Mainland High School over their reconstruction, and more times than I care to count with Embry-Riddle over our, our buffer zone, which I think has been addressed, was 500 feet. Well, it's more like 50 feet now. It's diminished greatly. So once again, we find it necessary to converge our little band of warriors here to vehemently oppose to any developer's desire to have the large-scale comp plan amended in order to obtain subsequent rezoning for a strip mall. Our neighborhood was once a premier neighborhood in the city of Daytona Beach. Little by little, encroachments have eroded our quality of life. Crime is rising, and I believe that if you allow the proposed changes to the large-scale comp plan, it will further continue to erode the neighborhood. Amending this plan opens the door for more and more commercial growth along the ISB corridor, which is, encompasses Nova Road to Clyde Morris. Since Tuscaloosa Park takes up a large portion of the land on the south side of ISB, and Mainland High School takes up another large parcel for the west on the south side, the only available land for any growth abuts the Highlands. We're already inundated with traffic from the high school and both universities with people taking shortcuts. In order to deter speeders, we requested the city to install speed tables, which they did, and we appreciate that very much. It has helped some, but not nearly enough. If you pass the proposed amendment, I'm afraid that it will increase the traffic at least tenfold in the neighborhood, and the safety of our kids and the valuation of our properties will continue to decline. With that, I respectfully request that you deny this, this amendment to the large-scale comp plan. The denial is also requested for the subsequent redevelopment, the zoning request, item number five. Thank you in advance for doing what's right for our neighborhood. I appreciate it.
Leah Leonard?
Leah Leonard.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, that was for number five. All right. Okay, if you would please turn off any cell phones or put them on. Okay, if you would please turn off any cell phones or put them on silent, I'd appreciate Board, we're ready for your discussions now.
Having been or being a native Daytonian, I've watched what these individuals are talking about, and I think it's really sad. I know individuals personally that live in that area, and I went through the issue with the buffer being taken away the last time and how they fought and fought and fought. It's an established neighborhood. It's something that I feel really identifies Daytona. I watched them tear it away when they widened International Speedway. I think, too, personally, I think both, what is it, four and five go hand in hand. The traffic, I talked to some individuals in that area earlier today just to get a feedback on it because I wasn't alerted about the homeowners meeting, and they said to me, and they were original buyers when the Highlands was first built, and they said to me, "The traffic, the traffic, the traffic." And even with the speed tables, I've been out there visiting, and I've watched the college hits come through, and it's like they're soaring in the airplanes. And this is not, I mean, it's an established neighborhood. You've got seasoned citizens out there. I would not want to put this on them. I wouldn't want this to be put on my parents. And I think four and five go hand in hand. You can't talk about putting this facility there without talking about the traffic because that area is going to be impacted by the traffic. And I don't care what we say or do, that is a key factor, and I just can't see going along with this.
Anyone else? John?
In looking at the future land use map and the designation of that entire strip of ISB as office transition, as we've known from other things that have come before us, the office transition forms a barrier category against other residential categories. And in this case, it's our highest-level residential, R-1A residential. So it seems to me that we should do everything to preserve the current office transition as a barrier against further incursion into the R-1A residential. And I understand the desire for the people to develop that commercial has a lower far and perhaps to use less water and things like that. However, once you get into the, once you put retail uses directly abutting R-1A, especially residential uses, there's got to be a deterioration in the quality of life for the people living in the R-1A area. So my feeling is we retain the office transition. We retain the map the way it is.
Ms. Remark?
No, you knew I was going to say something. Actually, first and foremost, I disagree with staff's finding that this area is not primarily single-family. I don't think that's accurate at all. We're looking at a school, a college, a bank, an advocacy center, and a park. Okay? And then we're looking at homes, nothing but homes, primarily homes. And to say because they occupy less frontage, actually, it's just a perspective. It is, as has been said, it's the whole thing in context. I also think that this stands out on ISB from other areas of ISB for a reason. It is not just Neighborhood M that has this policy. Interestingly enough, on the other side of ISB, the Daytona State College side, Neighborhood L, has this same policy because there's a neighborhood there that needs protecting as well. It is an office transition policy. It is a deep scenic thoroughfare setback. Interestingly enough, too, the city, in recognizing this as a scenic thoroughfare, unlike other parts of ISB, but actually, I even think other parts are scenic, when the FDOT six-laned it, the city had in their comp plan another policy that they would do these wide landscape medians to make this scenic, to make this a statement for Daytona Beach. So this is not something that doesn't fit. Neighborhood M fits very well. It fits within the context of the comp plan when you start looking at these. And as to scenic, I think when you drive up and down ISB from I-95 all the way in, you'll find deep landscape scenic setbacks all the way down. The Speedway, Target, Rooms to Go, Bethune-Cookman College, and what they've been doing with the performing arts, the Gail Limeron Nursing School, I mean, it's all up and down. Even Neighborhood H, which is immediately east of Nova Road, for any new development requires a minimum of a 25-foot scenic setback. So I think if there were a stronger word than will or shall, that would need to be in there, but I think it's strong enough already like it is. I don't have a problem with planning for where you have retail and where you have institutional, I mean, that's what we do. That's why we have the future land use map. I do have a problem being in a neighborhood that is impacted directly by heavy retail use on doing that to any other neighborhood in the city. The neighborhoods that already have that impact, we deal with it as best as we can, but to do that to a single other neighborhood in this city, I would think is a crime, quite frankly. No neighborhood deserves it as, we're in an older city, and some of these are so close, it's just not fair. Not only is Highlands established, but like I say, the other, the neighborhood on the other side, I'm not sure if it has a name, but it's, you know, White Street and all that. That's a very wonderful, old-established neighborhood as well. I don't think retail goes here for those reasons. The other thing I disagree with in the staff report, there's all sorts of ways of measuring impact. To just say that the water and sewer will come down when you have a staff report that on page six, I don't care if they're phantom, average daily trips or what, but when staff actually points out that it will be a significantly higher average daily trip, in fact, what they point out is an over 400% increase just for this one property. If you change the, if we make this large-scale comp plan amendment, it's not just this one property. It is all the way down. And I think the same thing will happen on the other side of the street. We'll have the pressure to, instead of office transition, which it currently is in Neighborhood L, I think you'll start seeing pressure to make changes over there. One of the things, and I do appreciate that much of what Ms. Morrissey said about Mainland relying on these policies is what I heard her say, to actually have a presence on ISB, to make the investment. I do know there was a great deal of pressure to take it out of the city limits much further, and we would have lost that entire corner. That actually, I think Mainland has stabilized this area tremendously, and it's wonderful, a wonderful adjunct to Daytona State College and everything around there. But I do just want to say one last thing. Looking at Mr. Hollab's packet to us, there was a letter from Carol Eaton, the president of the Daytona State College. Well, I spoke with another major landowner on ISB Today who also is across the street, has been there for a few decades, and has slowly but surely inquired a great deal of ISB frontage, and even has had a professional office in that area for a long time and has done a beautiful job of it. And I asked him what he thought about retail, and he said, "Well, if it were me, I'd tell them no." And I quite frankly think that Dr. Rick Lentz has every bit as much of a say as Carol Eaton. And he has certainly been a long-term and good neighbor in that area and doesn't want to see the door opened on one side of the street that will open the door on the other side of the street, and we all know it would. So I do hope that we say no to this. I know Mr. Hurt is very much a business-oriented person, and actually, so am I, but I think what we miss quite too often in this city is finding a balance to that. This staying like it is keeps that balance.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Hurt.
I wanted to segue to you.
You prefaced me. But I've got mixed feelings about it. I hear the concerns of the neighbors, but I see how retail works, like on Dunlottin. We have retail centers on Dunlottin, Port Orange, we're in another city, and they have the corridor, and then the neighborhood's right behind the retail centers. The same on Granada with the trails, and then behind, you know, the huge trails development there, and that seems to work very well. So that's...
It seems to me that there's a significant difference between office transition and the comp.
I think they can hear me. I think there's a significant difference in the traffic that will come to them as opposed to what comes to retail centers. What bothers me is that somebody coming into retail, sometime, there's a lot of activity that comes in automobile-wise, and I think they will, I think they will encroach on that area when they're getting out or in. Now, that's going to happen, yes, a little bit with, actually with offices, but not nearly like it would happen with retail. And so I'd be very much against changing it from there, because I do think it's a good buffer between more, let's see, I think it's a good buffer in that it serves as the buffer there for the retail. But I don't want to increase how much activity is going in there retail-wise. I don't think that's a good idea.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Could I just add one more thing?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I did, based on what Mr. Hoytsmas said, one thought I did have, again, living on Seabreeze, because we hear about far and intensity and use like that, I would much rather have the 444 building on Seabreeze, which is all office and, I don't know, 16 stories next. I'd much rather have all of Seabreeze be that, and I don't care how many times they flush the toilet and how much water they use, that's going to have less impact on me than the retail uses that happen outside. It's that outside activity of retail. So I'll take one impact increasing over the other.
All right. I think we've pretty well exhausted this stuff. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, in response to a couple of the previous comments, as far as a D cell lane goes, if FDOT requires one, we'll certainly put one in. If they allow one, we'll put one in. As far as office traffic generation versus retail, our peak hour trips between 4:00 and 6:00 o'clock are nominal. We do not compete with Mainland, which exits at 2:45 in the afternoon, and which, their biggest peak hours at 7:45 in the morning and at 2:45 in the afternoon. With office, our peak hour trips in the morning will go up dramatically. Our daily trips, as our traffic engineer will testify before you tonight for this particular project, are 850. When you deduct the pass-or-buy trips, the trips that are already on the road for retail, it comes down to 500, and I believe 51. When you look at the office trips, you do not deduct pass-by trips because office is a destination. The difference between our net retail trips and office trips is probably less than 100 trips. As far as access goes to the neighborhood, as you will see from the next item before you, the rezoning, we do have access on Central. It's not key if this board suggests or require that we restrict it, limit it, or eliminate it. We have no issue with that. Where the access to this project would strictly be from ISB, we have built several of these centers, several of them in Ormond Beach that backed up to residential neighborhoods and in very similar situation with very old-established neighborhoods, and we've been a great neighbor and continue to be with our centers. But you have to understand with an office component, the AM peak hour trips between 7:00 and 9:00 or 6:00 and 8:00, I'm not sure, Target would have to answer that, go up dramatically, and now we're going to be competing with Mainland High School at that time in the morning. Our AM trips are less than 20 at peak hour. And why? Because the predominant low-intensity retail users in the center don't open their doors to 10:00 o'clock. Yes, there are a few that open earlier, but 70% to 80% of this center, and we've built this center time after time in Port Orange, in Ormond Beach, in Palm Coast, and other areas, our centers like this, this is a neighborhood center, it's not a power center, it's not a large-box retail center, operates between typically between 10:00 in the morning and 9:00 in the evening. Thank you.
All right. So I understand, Mr. Walton, we have two votes on this one issue.
No, you don't have to.
We can combine the two.
There's two different parts in the comp plan that deal with it that both needed to be amended to get to the next item, and so you don't have to break it up.
All right. Well, let's...
Just in response to Ms. Morrissey's comment, we had proposed some revisions to the issue that described that segment of ISB, and that there's two sentences. We weren't excluding the high school as setting an attractive image. They're in two separate sentences. What I was trying to do was exclude Mainland from the category of the low-density mixed uses, so it would be easy to revise that sentence to say, "West ISB is developed with the Mainland High School and a low-density of mixed uses comprised of," and so on, so that the second sentence wouldn't imply that the high school wasn't included in that attractive image of that segment. I was just, that might clear it up.
I was going to say, that's what we get trying to be clear.
Yeah. That makes a difference. All right, well, we're ready.
Then a motion to, unless I, a motion to approve large-scale comp plan amendment, Tarragona Shops, DEV 200111-087.
All in favor?
Roll call, maybe?
Yes, we'll have a roll call vote. That will be fine.
Okay.
Mr. Hurt? Ms. Remark?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Ms. Washington?
No.
Mr. Hoytsmas?
No.
Ms. Benjamin?
Yes.
Mr. Fishback? Mr. Neal? Okay, it loses... Okay, one vote for.
Two.
I'm sorry, two votes for, seven against.
All right.
I guess we don't want to count Mr. Hurt tonight. Is that...
We forgot to ask if he was here, and now he hasn't voted.
Well, I tell you, we won't, we won't have item number five, sentence the rezoning, that would go with this, and it would have to pass before we could have that.
Well, go ahead and call the...
Well, go ahead and call the item.
You have to have an action on it. Okay.
Item number five.
Right.
Rezoning, planned commercial development, Tarragona Shops, DEV 2011-088.
Ms. Marozek.
What do we do?
Unless there's questions for staff, I mean, land uses...
It wouldn't be in compliance.
You cannot approve this if the first one isn't approved.
Okay.
Just for a correction, Dennis Marozek, planner with the city. What are the options for the applicant at this point forward, moving forward with the application?
He can still appeal to the city commission.
He could appeal to the city commission. And if this item were to be heard and not approved also, would he also have that opportunity to appeal to the city commission?
That's why I think we need to have an official action and give him his ability to seek relief if he...
If he wishes to move forward about this or continue to draw, I mean, it's up to the other.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would request that the board review this item and make recommendations. There's several components of it that this board may suggest as restrictions or additions. It is my intention to take the comp plan amendment to, of course, the city commission and to the other agencies that review it. And what I would like to not have is that I could come back again before this board on the rezoning issue if, in fact, the comp plan is approved. There were several items that came about from the neighborhood meeting that improved and modified the plan, and I think some of those same things could happen tonight with your review if you would hear the item.
All right. Certainly will do that.
Thank you very much. Again, Dennis Marozek, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. This next item is a request on behalf of Paul Hollub to rezone 2.47 acres of land located at 1173 International Speedway Boulevard from R1A Single Family to Planned Commercial Development or PCD, which will offer a 21,000-plus square foot retail center and associated improvements. Just want to roll through this again real quick for you. I know we all know where it's located. Again, it's 1173 International Speedway. The current land use of the site is office transition. We do have the proposed land use going to the low-intensity commercial. The current zoning of the site is, again, R1A Single Family, and the proposed zoning of the site is planned commercial development. Couple of details about the actual site itself. 2.47 acres, it is a vacant site at a proposal cause for 21,274 square foot of retail center. The required parking for this, for the proposed uses, total 70 spaces in total. The applicant has provided 115 standard spaces and five handicap spaces, providing a total of 120 total parking spaces. The bicycle parking was also, had met the required and provide a number of seven. I did want to point out that the applicant, at the encouragement of staff, did have a neighborhood meeting on this, on this particular project. It was held in October, attended by approximately 40 people, and then the applicant did present the plan to the residents. There were several concerns at that time. I do have a full list in attachment A of your staff report that details, I tried to go through all of the comments and how they were addressed at the meeting. But some of the concerns that came up included traffic through the residential neighborhood, what permitted uses, or uses that would permit alcohol sales, that was a concern. Would there be enough parking for the site? And will there be restaurants that could offer delivery services, like Jimmy John's or Domino's? Provide you some of the architectural elevations of the building. At the top, you see the front part of the building. The bottom shows the back part of the building. I wanted to point out, one of the, we have seven waiver requests from the Land Development Code. One of them is identified right over here, and it has to do with the varying roof lines, excuse me, the, yeah, the roof and wall variances along the western portion of the actual building.
I'm sorry, the roof and what variances? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Yeah, there's a roof and wall variance. It has to be offset, roof and wall, and it's not offset in this particular location. Although the applicant did provide above and beyond the requirements for architectural standards for a large portion and the majority of the building. In the rear of the building, when, I believe there were comments made that perhaps something could be done to improve that area, there was a parapet that was installed to hide any roof equipment, and I believe that the, also the canopies over the doors were also included, the awnings. Just to give you an idea, I put up a site plan for you for orientation. ISB is located at the top of the screen. Central is located at the west or the left of the screen. Point out a couple of identifying features on the site plan, and I apologize for the people in back who can't see this, but toward the right of the actual site is the location of the drive-through bank. Cars coming in, circling around, meeting the queuing requirement through the bank before exiting out. That's one of the features. You've got the, the primary building is located centrally on the site. There are three access points, ingress, egress points on the site. These two are located over on ISB. This one in particular, to the far west, is one that is still waiting for the FDOT approval for the, for the cut to the median, to be able to permit this access into this portion of the site. The third location is the one that is off of Central Street. This was, this was a point of contention during the neighborhood meetings, whether or not there should be an access point over there. And at the neighborhood meetings, there was great discussion on it. It was decided at that time, and some of the residents had felt comfortable with, if a right-turn-out-only lane were installed at that location, it would prevent traffic from being able to access into the neighborhood. So Mr. Hollub did design this particular feature with a right-out-only. Anybody using this site would be able to access and out onto ISB. This also does help with the circulation for some of the garbage trucks coming in, picking up the dumpsters and being able to access back out and looping the site. This is the wall that is proposed. Give you the location of the wall proposed in the back. A wall is not required on this section, this portion of the site, but there is a six-foot wall that is proposed, circles all the way around back, and this pretty much mirrors the property line where the wall is going to be located.
Could you tell me, because I had a hard time reading the smallness of the site plan, where the red line is on the backside to Cordova, what is the depth of that buffer?
You're looking from this point?
Right.
To this point?
Yes.
This, the property line is right about at the, is at the wall line. This area right over here is all considered right-of-way.
Okay.
And not part of the applicant's property. So his property line would go right about to there. The requirement is for a, as far as a compatibility to surrounding uses, would be a 10-foot landscape buffer and a hedge. He's provided, I took some measurements of it and I've calculated it to be about eight. Could be 10, but it looks like it might be more like eight. But it's eight feet and a six-foot wall as opposed to the 10-foot and a hedge. So it's a substantial buffer that's being provided at that location. Some of the proposed uses for the location, I'm going to run them down real quick for you, but restaurants with drive-through service, restaurants, boutique bar, specialty eating and drinking establishments. That's an actual term that's being used in the Clarion rewrite, the Land Development Code rewrite. We don't have this term currently in our existing Land Development Code, so staff would probably suggest that would, it should be removed to be more consistent with what the current Land Development Code is. Travel agencies, office uses. And then we see medical treatment facility, medical or dental clinic, medical or dental lab. Staff would recommend, as opposed to using those languages, we go with professional office. That's a term that's used in our code today, which includes a medical use and a dental use. Retail, sales, and service uses. And then the final one on bottom was banker, financial institutions with drive-through service. One other thing that had come up is perhaps the possibility of adding another use, personal service. I know that Mr. Hollub had mentioned hair care, perhaps a use like a massage envy. Those would fall under the personal service and be allowed in that type of, that type of a retail use.
What was intended with the specialty eating and drinking establishment originally? Sport bar or what?
Well, I can have the applicant speak about that specifically, and maybe it's something that actually might work if we can kind of hammer out exactly what we were looking for. One of the things that came up at the neighborhood meeting, there were certain uses that the neighbors were pretty sure that they definitely didn't want. So they listed several of them, and Mr. Hollub had no problem including those as strictly prohibited in the PD agreement. Typically, if it's not listed as a proposed use in a PD agreement, it would not be permitted. But to remove any doubt, he did include it as a prohibited use. These do include liquor or package stores, funeral home or mortuary, convenience stores, flea market, tattoo establishments, farmer's market, body piercing establishments, and crematorium. And I believe that there may have been some additional ones that came up later that somebody would have wanted to have included in, and there's opportunities to still add things to that list. Proposed signage, excuse me, proposed signage for the, for the site, there are two monument signs that are being proposed. Each monument sign is 100 square feet. Typically, what we do when we determine whether or not the signage is appropriate for a zoning district, the plan developments are a little bit different. We have to look for a comparable type of a use when we make our determinations for how much, excuse me, how much signage would be permitted. In this case, 60 square feet per sign would be the permitted use for this type of use. The request was for 100 square foot per sign, which would be a waiver from the Land Development Code, which is also listed in our staff report. Additionally, there's a, there are four planter signs. The planter signs are really, there are planters that do hold extra vegetation, and being an opportunity for some additional signage, it would be a request, a waiver from the Land Development Code. Our Land Development Code currently doesn't identify that type of sign. It's just, we don't have an option to allow that. As far as LDC waiver requests, the west side of the building, as I had pointed out, not meeting the roof and the wall offset requirements. The building perimeter not being fully landscaped, there are requirements for the building to be fully landscaped around. The proximity of the building to some of the parking made it difficult to do the full landscaping around. Scenic setback requirement was reduced. This portion of ISB has a 40-foot scenic setback requirement. The applicant has requested to reduce that to 20 feet. However, he has taken all of the landscape material that would have been in a 40-foot landscape buffer, and he's installed it into the 20-foot landscape buffer. So the material is there. The width of the scenic setback has been reduced or requested to be reduced. Also, the required landscape buffer at the rear of the property is absent, and this is, I'm going to back up just a little bit, and I apologize, I don't have a landscape plan. I thought I had one on here, but I missed it. In this area right over here, there is no landscape buffer. There's a landscape buffer requirement for compatibility between the residential uses and the retail use. So this is actually a sidewalk, does have a six-foot wall, but there's a sidewalk with no landscaping in there. That's a, that is a waiver from the Land Development Code. The required landscaping at the property perimeter is not met. There are certain landscape requirements at the property perimeter. I believe we're short on some of these requirements. We've added it to the list of waiver requests. When we get the full landscaping plan with the full details of where all of the plants are going to be located, we'll be able to know that a little bit further to see if it is going to be a waiver request. And again, the signage that exceeds the area for the business district. Let's see here. I wanted to point out one more additional waiver request that had come up, and it had to do with the alcohol sales. I spoke with our zoning official today regarding a requirement to restrict alcohol sales when there's a proximity to a school. This is to allow locations to serve alcohol that do not meet minimum standards for eating establishments, bars, et cetera, et cetera. This can be waived through the PD process, so if you identify an item like a boutique bar that doesn't serve any food, if it's listed here, it would be a waiver from the Land Development Code, so they would be allowed to have that alcohol license even though they were within the proximity of the school. A restaurant that seats over 50 people and meets certain requirements, they don't have to follow the proximity requirement to schools, so you could have a restaurant in there without a waiver requirement for the alcohol. And again, I just wanted to reiterate this, and I know we've talked about it before, but approval of this rezoning request is a policy decision based on staff analysis, planning board review and recommendation, and ultimately city commission approval. This item will be scheduled for the city commission action pending a response of the land development, of the land use change amendment from VGMC, surrounding communities, and ultimately state reviewing authorities. As far as a recommendation, staff has reviewed the applicant, the application request to rezone a subject site to PCD rezoning. Should the concurrent application submitted for the land use change receive final approval and adoption, an approval of the PCD rezoning request would bring the subject property into compliance with the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. Without the land use change approval, the rezoning for the PCD cannot go through. An affirmative vote of six by the planning board members shall be required to recommend approval to the city commission.
All right. Any questions of staff? Harry Nunn, Mr. Hope, would you like to make a comment?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. In retrospect, I think possibly presenting this project before the comp plan amendment may have been beneficial to some, not to all. As far as the staff revisions regarding personal service and professional office use, that those are fine. We had medical dental clinics because of an Aspen Dental or retail-type dental agency business that may want to operate at this location. As far as specialty eating, drinking establishment, it was more for, we have some of these in some of our other centers where there's a wine establishment where they sell the bottled wine and cheese and baskets and those type of things, and I didn't know what category that fit in, but that was the intention. So if there had to be further restriction as it goes to that definition, we have no objection to it. We're not looking to have a bar or a boutique bar in any of our centers. We have numerous centers, and we don't have that use anywhere that I can think of. Any alcohol would strictly be under an SRX license for the food establishment where they would have to sell a certain minimum, I believe it's 51% of food, before they could serve alcohol. Again, we're conscious of our neighbor, and we know that, you know, a bar, nightclub, any of those uses are strictly prohibited, and we have those prohibited in our PD document. Just briefly... I'm going to, those were, I'm going to skip through those.
Point to that, the little monitor.
The little monitor.
The little monitor.
As far as the architecture goes, the elevation and some of the hardscape and features that we've put into the building are similar to some other centers we built with a combination of raised parapids, stucco, brick finish, variant entries, so that it's not your typical strip center with linear glass. And we think that what we've proposed adds some character and is very aesthetically pleasing to ISB. It's probably certainly as, as good as what you've seen in the area out there, other than some of the more recent buildings, it certainly has architectural features that, that are lacking in other areas. The rear elevation, all of our gutters downspouts are internal to the building, all of our electrical is internal to the building. We build an electrical room so that none of our meters or disconnects are, are to the exterior. We build a parapet so that our HVAC units cannot be seen. We finished the backside of our tower, our tower elements since they are seen from the neighborhood. There is a six-foot masonry wall that's finished to match the building. And we've put a lot of the landscaping, we've increased the landscaping along Cordova and along Central Avenue on the street side of the wall to minimize some of the impacts to the neighborhood. We can skip that. On our site plan, we, when we met with the neighborhood, they were concerned, as you heard, about traffic into the neighborhood. After the meeting, we came out with a right turn only for Central Avenue. After we met with the neighborhood, we went to FDOT, we were able to secure support for a left turn westbound in, and the FDOT was going to permit both of these driveways. So, the access to Central Avenue is not that important to us anymore. If there's no access or just a restricted access for ingress or restricted access just for egress or no access at all, we, we have no issue with that. By eliminating the Central Avenue access, we eliminate any commercial into the neighborhood. There would be no reason for anybody that comes into the center. Well, first of all, the only way in and out would be on ISB. And anybody that wanted to access from the neighborhood would, would have to come up and enter onto ISB and come into the center with this closed off. We would eliminate all commercial traffic into the neighborhood. When the traffic leaves, they're going to leave on ISB. If they live in the neighborhood, they would have to exit and go eastbound to, I believe it's Terragona, and then back into the neighborhood. So, it's not convenient for the neighborhood, but if that's their pleasure to cut all access off to the neighborhood, that's fine. We've built these centers before, same situation where we've had access left in, in the plan. The neighborhood uses it. They walk to the center, they bike to the center, they drive to the center, they do use it. This was more convenient. We can reposition our dumpster and, and still have the dumpster emptied and the trucks would ex, exit onto ISB. So, we can eliminate all commercial traffic into the neighborhood. One of the other items in our site plan, we have a lot of hardscape features, all of our sidewalks are pavers, our entry features are all in pavers. After meeting with Ms. Morrissey from the school board, she talked about crosswalks. There is a crosswalk that currently exists here. There is a crosswalk that we added to our plan after I met with her, but unfortunately, it goes nowhere once you get over onto the mainland property. Right now, the, the kids that go to mainland high school, they're allowed to leave for lunch, certain, once they're at a certain GPA or a certain grade. A lot of them cross ISB, six-lane highway, go to Burger King, McDonald's, Wendy's, and some of the other restaurants. This would give them an alternative, a very safe route to walk to the center to any potential food uses that may be in the center without crossing ISB. It would make it very convenient for them. If in fact, this project's approved and the school board's interested, I'd be more than happy to build a sidewalk into their center, I mean, into the schools, uh, school grounds to make it convenient for the students to access this, giving them a safe, uh, an alternate route, a very safe route versus crossing International Speedway Boulevard. Some of the other hardscape features are decorative lights, decorative benches. We put a lot of onens in that match the building. We, as far as our proposed entry walls, the Terragona is backlit, so it's very soft and it's more for aesthetics. It's not necessary for success in the center, it's more of an aesthetic feature. We do have a landscape plan and, and I apologize, this has been a work in progress. We have updated it. All of our material is oversized. If it, code requires a two-and-a-half inch caliper tree, we've gone to four-inch. If code requires a one gallon, we've upsized it to three, three to five. When we finish designing the site and we plant our material, it's mature from day one. It doesn't take three years to look like something. It, it's very mature landscaping from the very, from the get-go. We do believe that we, as we've progressed through this plan, that we probably meet or have diminished some of the waivers that are in your packet tonight by upsizing the trees, by adding, we are planting additional material in the right-of-way along Cordova and IA, Central Avenue significantly with hardwood trees, shrubs, and ground cover in this area. Building elevation, you've basically seen. Right now, the floor plan is for nine tenants. It could change as time goes on with a larger tenant taking space, or it could grow with division of a space, but at the end of the day, it'll be somewhere between eight and 10 tenants ultimately in the center. Our proposed signage is to match the decor of the center and allow tenant panels, again, with the final tenant selection and number of tenants, the signage could be reduced in size if that's an issue with this board or staff. And all of our building signage, it has to be illuminated channel letters. We don't allow box signs, we don't allow raceways to be exposed, they have to be hidden, so it's a very clean, uniform look. And that's the entry feature as you come in off ISB. It's similar to what we did in Ormond Beach at a couple of our, at Tuscany shops where we have a planter and we have the, the name of the center's backlit with substantial landscaping behind the entry walls. This is just a, a overview of what is really out there. There may not be commercial adjacent to me or low-intensity commercial, but there certainly is to the east and to the west. With respect to the traffic, again, our net daily new trips is 561. When you calculate in the office use and the, what you can build there office-wise, we probably close the gap within 100 trips. Our PM peak trips is 49, our AM peak trips is 20. It's very nominal. We don't compete with mainland high school. You transfer this to office use, we will definitely compete with them in the AM hours where all of the office comes at the same time, typically within similar hours. So, we will definitely be competing with them with the AM peak hour trips. I think in any case, our PM peak hour trips will not compete because the school closes roughly between the hours of 2:45 to probably 3:30, 4 o'clock. Again, I, I ask for this board for their support and if there's any changes or modifications that they would want to make contingent upon, naturally, our comp plan would have to be approved by the city commission by a majority vote in order for this to move forward, but we certainly appreciate any input this board may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any speakers for, we have.
Could I, could I ask Mr. Hollibard just a question? I'm sorry, I just wanted to, and, and also just a statement, I think you have to be approved by a supermajority of the commission on the, okay. One of the things I'm very curious about, why are you providing 50 extra parking spaces than are required?
Because when you have restaurant uses mixed in at your peak hours, not peak traffic hours, but your peak hours at lunchtime and so on, the standard retail doesn't work. I have several centers where we have.
Almost, because that's actually almost, what is that, 80% increase? You're going from 70 to 120.
70% increase. When you have a similar, for instance, where we had in Ormond, we have a Crispr's, a Subway, Mango Sun in the dish, and when you have a lunch and dinner crowd plus the waitstaff, the, the standard retail doesn't work. And I've got that in similar centers throughout Volusia County. So, historically, just from experience, I, I know it doesn't work. I don't want to encroach into the neighborhood or the neighborhood right-of-ways for parking.
Okay. And Tuscany, there's only, I believe you have nine properties or shops or whatever proposed here. Tuscany only has 13. There's only four more and that's, I know you had to do a traffic analysis impact study for Ormond to go in there, but you're saying that only four more shops generate, or only four less shops generate only 100, or 150 average daily trip difference?
I'm sorry. Daily, daily trips for this center, based on Target's report, is 850.
Right.
Pass or buy, when you deduct that, I believe it comes to 550 or 60 trips.
But, there's only a four-shop difference between Tuscany and what's proposed here. Tuscany is 13, this is nine.
Right. But, but I don't have a traffic study for Tuscany with me tonight. I'm, I'm not sure of the question.
Well, you had to do one for Ormond because it generated more than 1,000. That's, that, their code says the same thing as ours. So, what I'm, I just sort of have a hard time getting my head around the fact that four shops less is, or four shops more is only 150 more. I don't know how, you only have 850 on this. I, I was just, for four, well, when Tom did it in the first staff report, based on the, whatever thing that he did. IT manual, eighth edition, he came up with 1066, or 1066, and yours is only 850. So, I was just curious of the difference because I know the Ormond one, it's required because it was over 1,000 and there's only four less shops here.
Yeah. Ormond is close to 39,000 square feet.
Okay, so it's a square footage.
It's about, almost double the size of the center, though a component of it is our office and there is a five or 6,000 square foot retail pet supermarket and there's, there's various components.
Okay.
But, we have found from experience that the parks are necessary when you know that you're going to have some type of food establishments in, in the center that compete for the same lunch and dinner hour. Now, if you had just a breakfast at one end and a dinner house at the other end that only opens at 4 o'clock, then that, that doesn't necessarily become as much of a challenge. But, when you have others that are all competing for lunch and all competing for dinner, it does. And what we don't want to have is cars parking out on the right-of-way, though with the closure of the ingress egress at Central Avenue, that eliminates that concern for the neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
I would like to just go on record as, as telling you that Highlands Neighborhood Association is opposed to the, to the proposed zoning change. And before I begin, I have four letters from, from some of our members that I'd just like to, to hand to someone in place in the record in opposition to that. I'd like to speak specifically to a couple of things. One of the, one of the things that's obscured in this conversation about traffic and whether it competes with, with Daytona State College and mainland in terms of, of peak traffic hours, is the extension of the traffic day, and that's one of our, our core concerns. We're talking about restaurant businesses, we're talking about businesses that span the time as, as discussed here, up until 9:00 PM. We have been, the experience, I've talked about some of the stress, and I, I love mainland high school. I have two daughters who graduated from mainland high school in recent years. So, I, I, but, but it is a fact that we have, we experienced some traffic and, and some of our neighbors are really stressed about that. One of the nice things about that is that's done during the day. We're really extending some intensity into some of the hours when people are home and would like to enjoy their homes, and I think that that needs to be mentioned. In talking about some of the issues that were raised during the meeting, one of the things, the neighborhood meeting with the developer, one of the things was left out in our concern that we expressed about garbage, a great deal of our concern had to do with, with the noise associated with that for the people who live in proximity to that development. My experience with, with large-scale garbage pickup is that that happens really early in the morning and that it's a fairly noisy kind of a thing. That was a concern for us also, just in terms of, of a restaurant business, certainly there is the potential for odor and, and that's really close. There's not a lot of, in terms of feet, there's not a lot of buffer there between residents and the, and the property. One of our neighbors has a concern about the trees who lives right next door to that project, the trees on the borderline, what will happen to them. I think the, the other thing in terms of timing is, you know, there was a Starbucks discussed as, as a potential tenant. That's early morning traffic. That's, that's right there with all of the rest of the mix there with the school and, and Daytona State College. So, in, in our questions about will there be restaurants that deliver, I need to, to make sure that people understand that we weren't asking if we could get delivery from these restaurants, we were expressing some concern about whether delivery staff will be running in a hurry, taking the shortcut through our neighborhood. We're concerned that, that the buffer just isn't enough for the type of use that's proposed. I'm sure, I've seen the pictures and it looks nice. It's a nice-looking proposed development, but the impact on the neighborhood is what we're concerned about. And if I understand what I'm looking at, I think the, the right-of-way on the backside seems to be one and the same with Cordova. Am I done, or can I speak just a little more? I'm, I'm not sure that I understand that and whether in fact, there's, there's really a right-of-way there. But, suffice it to say that the neighborhood is, is opposed to this really for the same reasons we're opposed to the, to the, the land use change. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more thing, I do want to just say, one of our neighbors asked me to say, and I forgot the first time, and I don't want to forget this time, that the Daytona, the Highlands neighborhood is the first subdivision in Daytona Beach. The, the Terragona Arch, which is on the National Registry of Historic Places, was the original real estate office. That was the original development. There are homes in there that date back to the 1920s, there are streets in there that date back to the 1920s. There are residents who are second generation, who have, have grown up there and stayed there and, and established themselves. And this is a place that really is, you know, the, the saying, "I am Daytona Beach." We are Daytona Beach, and it's very important that we preserve the character of that neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last speaker is Sarah Lee Morrissey.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Sarah Lee Morrissey. I'm with the Volusia County School District. My comments are based on the assumption that the land use would go forward and that these would be restrictions that we would request. And, and Mr. Hollibard has touched on many of them as we discussed them Monday. We are concerned with any kind of a waiver that involves alcohol. This, this is next door to a school. It's not a couple hundred feet, it's next door, and it's not just next door to a school, it's next door to a high school. And our children in high school tend to be a little bit more impressionable and don't always listen to us and maybe often don't. So, we would request that no alcohol be allowed. So we would request that no alcohol be allowed. On page three of the agreement, and again, this, this concerns me not so much with Mr. Hollab, but properties sell and there's a different owner. The way it's written right now, it says the following uses are restricted within the property. And someday we'll be dealing with people who didn't sit in this meeting and they'll think that, oh, well, you're just allowed to do that somewhere within. It needs to read, "The following uses are prohibited." And the list that's there include nightclubs, bars, or other establishments serving alcohol. We did have a conversation about traffic and I do believe that if a full blown traffic study, traffic impact analysis was done, we could take a look at it. I, as the school district representative, very concerned trying to figure out. There is not a right turn. Okay, we, we put in right turns. So everybody's going to slow down in order to turn in. You know, I don't know if that's something that people want. The left turn, how much of the median gets removed for the left turn? How much stacking is there? What median is left? There is a lot of pedestrian traffic. And that needs to be included in a traffic study that nobody is looking at. Years ago, we didn't have students who went from Mainland High School to DSC. But every year, we're seeing more and more students dual enroll. And I, I'm not saying this is good and this is not safe. But our students are not walking to ISB and Clyde Morrison crossing at that signal where there's pedestrian features so that they can then walk east to DSC and enter DSC. They're crossing wherever. And the, the median that's there provides a safe haven while they cross. So I am interested and concerned about what happens to the medians. And we should be looking at pedestrian traffic. There's no question. Our students are going to be over at this center all of the time. They'll be late for school if there's a Starbucks. The only happy hour our students know is the two for one at Steak 'n Shake. So, you know, we need to just keep in mind how impressionable our young, young people are. And, and if this would move forward, it, it needs to be as clean as possible without, without interference in, in our young people's lives in the school day. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I have a, just a quick question. Just so I understand the alcohol waivers. You were talking about bars, nightclubs. What about restaurants that serve alcohol? Lunchtime, like Mango Sun or something like that, that's serving alcohol at lunchtime and?
I love Mango Sun. I love eating there, but I'm here representing our school.
Okay.
And in talking to our principal, you know, we, we just don't need more issues dealing with, you know, the issues we deal with, with, with high school students, so.
So even if it were an actual sit down restaurant, you're, you're just saying no alcohol across the street from the school? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, I'm ready for your comments.
I'd just like to. The more you hear about this project, the more disruptive it is to me. It's a. I guess as far as issues with the high school students, I, the applicant mentioned that, you know, it would be a safer route to, instead of walking across to Burger King, McDonald's, and all the rest. However, I totally completely see this place being a hangout. And what would happen is you would have to hire, probably, I don't know if you'd hire, but you'd have to have personnel to keep kids from the shops so they'd be in school. I mean, you, because people, I mean, you would almost have to have somebody standing there, hey, you're supposed to be going to school, not to the restaurant or whichever it is. So that would be my concern. But I think approving this, approving this, well, of course, we can't approve it now, but it's, I think right now over at ISB in that area, there's a level of stability to where you do say, if you're not, you, you don't fit in, you don't look in place. And I think that brings an element of safety. Because, you know, there's a school, there's DSC, and then there's Mainland. And I think if you add this element, you'll have, like, so you had the pedestrian traffic and, and it could possibly, we, there's a lot of students in Mainland, you know, they're walking and everything else. So you would have, you would bring another element of, that I don't think we want as a city is, an unsafe element. All it would take is one or two stories about some student or some young woman or young man or whichever else to end up, to end up having a negative image about our city. So this is a bold request. It's bold. And it's right, I thought about the applicant's consideration and said, well, what would make this happen? There would have to be a lot before I would really consider approving something like this.
Anyone else?
Well, I, I have a question. I, I mean, I have three pages of recommendations that, and I mean, they're real recommendations dealing with this stuff, the, and the waivers and the things asked. And I don't know, I don't want to make the board sit through this, but if the applicant's going for, forward, do I need to say them to put them on the record? And then before I even make those recommendations? And it has to do with archetype, architecture, wall, all of it. But the first question I have, before this goes forward anywhere, or why this came before our board without a traffic impact analysis? Because when, when I read what the Land Development Code says in Article Six, there's two things that would generate a TIA. One, if there's more than 1,000 or more two-way daily trips. And Mr. Hollab has said it's 850, and then with the people that are driving by, it's 549. Well, that's fine. So let's say that that's true, it doesn't meet that. But the very first threshold, a TIA shall be, and we heard the meaning of shall, is required for rezoning applications, not a traffic statement, a TIA, in which the trip ends associated with the requested zoning district's most intensive use are greater than 10% of the trip ends associated with the existing zoning use. This met that criteria. It's an either or, so I'm unsure why we don't have a traffic impacts analysis. And additionally, before the reviewing board hears it, when it's required, it has to be turned in four weeks before, not three days before, which I think was a little bit more of an analysis, not just a statement. So I'd actually like to hear how staff even determined that there was any leeway in suspending that requirement in the Land Development Code.
All I can tell you is the applicant submitted a traffic statement with this, routed. When the reviews came back, no one raised that as a requirement.
The reviews from traffic?
From city staff, the TRT staff.
Okay. But that, there is no waiver from that, correct? I mean, if it reads more than 10%, and even at 500, this is more than 10%, that should be required, period, for rezoning?
Yeah, I mean, it would be up to planning to interpret, does it meet that requirement or not? And I guess they felt it did not.
Okay.
So I guess there's just disagreement about the trigger.
Okay. Well, because I, I think that trigger is, is key in this. Now, what do we do with, especially, I mean, one of the things a traffic impact analysis would have shown us, as Ms. Morrissey has pointed out, the right turn lane for Central, that's a slowdown lane, has a lot of traffic. How far after that turn lane is your first driveway that people are going to try and slow down to miss the buses, miss the cars dropping off students, miss the delivery trucks, and then turn into this? That's just one aspect of this traffic. But what should I do with all of these other things at this point, since he wanted this to be heard? Turn it in? I know what you'll say. Write it down and turn it in? I'd be happy to do that and make it part of the record.
Originally, I said it was an appeal. This just moves forward without the planning board's recommendation of approval. If you want, you can submit it to the clerk and it can be included as.
To the commission.
Right, it's, it's public record, so it can be included.
Because if the commission goes forward with this.
It would be part of the record, your comments.
I definitely would want these things to be incorporated because there's a lot of problems with the.
So you could just give it to Rose and it would be part of the record?
Okay. Because I don't want to make the board sit through all of this. Oh yeah, I bet you were.
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest one other alternative? And we understand that the board wants a traffic, a full traffic study, is to request a continuance of this item to give us an opportunity to get a full traffic study, to modify our plan based on some of the things we talked about tonight, to eliminate all traffic from the neighborhood with the closure of our ingress egress points at Central Avenue. Have the opportunity to meet, meet with Ms. Remark and any other board members I would like and get her input on things that she's concerned with. This matter's going to go to the City Commission regardless, as this board knows, for a, a vote and consideration. And I would rather go, whether it's with a positive vote or a, a vote that did not pass with the majority, I would still rather go with the input of this board forward. So if, if, if it's appropriate and allowed, I would ask for a continuance on this particular item.
It's the board's discretion. You can make that motion or just vote it up or down.
It'd have to be for a date certain, I would have not.
Yes, in order to save the public notice requirements, you would have to set, whether it's three months or.
Or it could be advertised, either way. Yes, Mr. Hurt?
Couldn't we make a motion eliminating that ingress and egress from Central Avenue and also requirement of a traffic study? And make that in the motion and then sort of just vote it up or down with that?
Oh, well, then I would have to read you my three pages if that's all. No, because all of that would want, I'd want to know if this board would want it in the motion.
And we could say incorporate Ms. Remark's.
Well, you may not agree with them all. You usually don't. Okay, well, that's true.
We could say, you know, to incorporate your, your notes into the motion.
Again, Mr. Chairman, the Conference of Land Use Text Amendment, MAP Amendment has to go out for other agency review. So this matter will not go to the City Commission for several months anyways. So it's, it's at the board's pleasure. But again, I may not agree with all of Ms. Remark's suggestions and, but there may be some things in there that are valid. I'd like to have the opportunity to meet with her. So as much as I would like to secure a vote tonight to go forward to the City Commission, I would rather come back before this board with an improved plan. It still may not pass muster, but at least we will have some interaction and there may be some things that will, will improve the plan going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, your pleasure on this.
Now, we're still talking about this number five, right?
Right.
So. I don't know, does, maybe I'm misunderstanding. To me, it would define reasoning, it would divide logic to really continue five.
Continue, I agree.
Four has to be approved first, right?
I agree.
That's true.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know why you would continue on five.
Yeah.
If four is already.
The only scenario I could think of is if he goes forward to City Commission with the land use and they recommend approval, then it would, but, but it still couldn't be heard because right now, as of right now, it's not consistent with the comp plan, so.
No, so it's not considered, Clinton being, so actually just vote it, vote, a straight vote, not a continuance. Okay.
So just out of clarification, so if this goes to the commission and it, or if it goes to the mission now with the appeal, and they, and.
It can't.
They say yes, it would come back to us for the rezone?
No, no. Both of these will move forward to the commission with planning board's recommendation of denial, but they could still by a super majority vote approve it and then he'd still be on track with his development process.
And the only thing he was asking is an opportunity to address, because he doesn't know what Ms. Remark is suggesting, but voting up or down, either way, we'll still give him that opportunity before he goes to the City Commission.
But then if it goes to the commission and they overrule the planning board for the large scale comp plan, then there has been no input from the full board. Because actually, the way that we discuss things, you know, it plays off of each other. Then there's no input from this full board other than a written record. So actually, it would make sense to continue it in that scenario, correct?
That was my suggestion from the beginning.
Okay.
And there is, it sounds like everything's been rushed too much with this, quite truthfully.
Yeah.
And it's, it's come through too quick. And so that would allow the applicant an opportunity to go back.
Well, then if we do it for actually two months, because this would go to the commission, when?
Not, not in.
First meeting in March.
First weekend in March.
No, well, no.
No, it's, you've got to go to two different agencies first, don't you?
So two months wouldn't be enough?
First meeting in March.
First meeting in March for a transmittal to the state agencies for review.
But we would know then, if the commission votes it down, it's not getting transmitted anyway.
Correct.
So if we say continue this till March, later in March, or should we do April?
You should know, the resolution trans, it's a resolution transmitting it.
Right.
So that's just one hearing.
Right.
So you would know by the end of March what the City Commission decided unless they continued it.
You would know about the transmittal. You wouldn't know of any of the issues that would be reviewed by VGMC or the state agencies until probably 60 days at least from now.
So then April, three months, 90 days?
Well, when we transmit it, it's going to take you probably 60 days to complete those two processes, assuming VGMC or someone doesn't ask for additional time, which they have the right to do.
But that wouldn't, I mean, if, if the commission says yes, that wouldn't prevent this board from.
From hearing the zoning.
From hearing this. They don't need to wait for, to hear from VGMC.
Right, okay. So then April? Okay. Motion to continue rezoning plan, commercial development, Tarragona Shops, DEV 2011 088 to the April 2012 Planning Board Meeting.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Actually, could I change my vote? I'm going to do the same thing.
I would never have a roll call.
Okay.
All right, I suggest that.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. McGinnis, you second that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
No, the, the motion is to continue to April, but we're doing a roll call vote because I, I want to vote no.
Mr. Hurt?
I'm confused.
I remembered you and you're confused.
If I vote, if I say yes, that means to continue it?
Yes. Ms. Remark?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Bohan is absent. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Washington, no. Mr. Hoitzma? Mr. Ben, I'm sorry, Ms. Benjamin?
Yes.
Mr. Fishback?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. La Sage is absent. We have two no's and seven yeses.
Thank you for your time.
So continue to April. Right, but we don't have any input if we just turn it down.
Is everyone okay? Can we do one more and then we'll take a break? All right, could we have Ms. Washington, item number six?
That's the big thing.
Item number seven.
I'm trusting.
I'm sorry. I'm moving it along.
Six.
Item number six, Large Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Citywide Social Service Uses, DEV 2011-091.
Okay. We hear from Mr. Whitnare? We hear from Mr. Wittenar?
Thank you. Mr. Walton is handing out changes to the package that you received for tonight. We received input by a Board member as well as the legal department on the texts that you already reviewed, which I think are going to improve the policies. Just give you a minute to receive those. This is a request by the Development and Administrative Services Department Planning Division for approval of a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment adding a goal and objective and policies to the future land use element in the comprehensive plan to encourage equalization of the city's overpopulation of social service providers to underserved areas outside of the city within Volusia Flagler Counties. Based on research provided by Planning Department staff during the past two years, the city of Daytona Beach has demonstrated a significant disproportionate share of social service uses compared to our population and to other local governments throughout the two counties. The following comprehensive plan amendments are proposed to set policy on the equalization of social service uses outside of the city within Volusia Flagler Counties. We have relevant data and analysis to support these amendments. Currently, there aren't any social service objectives, policies, or goals in our comprehensive plan. So what I handed out, that's underlined and stricken, are only changes to what you reviewed before. Everything in there is new to the comp plan, but we didn't want to do two sets of underline and strikeouts in that handout. Everything there would be new text. It adds a goal, objective, and two policies that are pretty straightforward. And... Let me run through those. The main direction are the goals. Part of this task is to set a legal foundation, to reinforce the foundation for the policies and our regulations for some work you've recently done. We want to establish the citywide. We received direction to do this. So the main goal is encourage equalization of the city's overpopulation of social service providers to underserved areas outside of the city within Volusia Flagler Counties as our goal. The objective is as follows. The city shall achieve a comparable percentage of social service providers to population as other areas outside of the city within Volusia Flagler County. And two policies. The city shall obtain the list of existing social service providers from sources including but not limited to United Way to compare with other populations outside of the city within Volusia Flagler Counties to determine whether Daytona Beach has a deficit or surplus. And the final policy. Only when there is a need for the social service providers in the city of Daytona Beach as compared to other areas outside of the city within Volusia Flagler Counties, the city will consider permitting new social service providers on a case-by-case basis through the public and semi-public use process unless otherwise specifically prohibited. We're making that unless otherwise specifically prohibited addition so that we don't discount the work that's recently been done in North Ridgewood area. So over there, they're specifically prohibited and that'll continue under this policy. Staff recommends a favorable review of the proposed amendments. We discussed this a month or two ago as a discussion item and can take questions now from the Board.
Any questions?
Just one thing in policy, the last one, 413. From our staff report, only when there is a demonstrated need. You left out the word demonstrated. And isn't that the whole idea, to demonstrate the need? It's part of why you're doing the policy above it?
We could add that, so policy four...
Need is the criteria in the LDC. The criteria is the LDC in order to get public, some public use is to show the need.
To show need, okay.
Because there would have to be a need for it to demonstrate.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't a word we needed, needed to have. Okay.
You've been burnt once or twice.
Yes, yes.
Okay, if there's no questions, we have one speaker, or two speakers really, no, just one, I'm sorry. Is Leah Leonard still here? Okay, probably does. Steph, or not Steph, I think Board, we're ready for any comments on this?
I don't think we've talked about this thing yet.
I think we've talked it to death, I do too.
Motion to approve large-scale comp plan amendment, citywide social service uses, DEV 2011-091, with the following proposed revisions that were given to us this evening.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
It's long overdue.
Item number seven, or do you want to take, you want to take a break? All right, let's take a 10-minute break.
Rezoning planned master development amendment, Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University Technology Park Tree Preservation, DEV 2011-097.
Thank you, Dennis Merzler, Planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The next item up today is the, is a request by Embry-Riddle to rezone 77.57 acres of land located on east side of South Clyde Morris Boulevard, which is located north of Bevel and south of Bellevue Avenue, amending the existing plan-master development agreement to modify the tree preservation and mitigation requirements. Site location, again, it is on Clyde Morris. It's on the west side, yeah, the east side of Clyde Morris, located north of Bevel, south of Bellevue. The future land use is general industrial and the current zoning is PMD Plan-Master Development. Brief history on this particular project. June 2008, the PMD was approved. June 2011, just recently, the timetable for development was extended to September 3, 2014. The request currently, trees up to 72 inches are to be preserved on-site or moved to a new location on-site. This is an amendment to the PMD agreement to allow modifications to that, those restrictions. The new proposal provides options for tree removal. One of the options is to, for every tree being removed, to put in $500 toward the tree, city tree fund. Question was how much would $500 buy for a tree? We've got some information that we'd be looking at about a four-to-five-inch caliper tree, approximately 16, maybe 18 feet tall. Another option would have been replacing the tree on-site. This is the first priority for the applicant. Whatever trees that are on-site, they want to be able to keep them on-site and that's the option that they are looking to use most often. And the other option is an off-site mitigation, which would have the applicant secure property off-site and with the extra trees that, above and beyond whatever the tree requirements would be for that particular site. For tree replacement, specimen trees are 12 inches or greater DBH. On the site, there are 193 specimen trees that are required to be preserved. 63 are going to be, proposed to be preserved. 130 identified for removal, replaced with four-inch DBH trees. The standard in our land development code for a replacement tree is two and a half inches, so this exceeds the two and a half inches by an inch and a half. The replacement trees are going to be replaced per lot at the site plan approval process. For every acre that each lot is, the applicant for that one lot is going to have to plant two additional trees per acre above and beyond any landscape requirement that is already on that lot. As far as historic trees, a historic tree is a 36-inch or greater DBH and typically a live oak or a bald oak, or a bald cypress. There are a few other categories that would make it a historic tree, but these are primarily what we're dealing with in this location. Seven have been identified for removal on the site and those are just identified for removal. There may be, there may be cause not to remove all of them, but just to play it safe as we go to the City Commission, just to identify all of the seven that may be removed and hopefully not be able to remove all seven. Of the seven identified for removal, they total 300-inch in total caliper. That would, that would come out to 60 replacement trees at five-inch DBH for a replacement. These replacement trees can be located anywhere on the site and again, it would be above and beyond any minimum requirement for the landscaping requirements based on the land development code. Staff does recommend approval of the PMD amendment. The rezoning request is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the City Commission for first reading on March 7 and second reading on March 21. An affirmative vote of six is required to recommend approval to the City Commission. Thank you.
Any questions to staff? Want to hear from the applicant, Representative?
Good evening, James Stowers with Cobb Cole, 150 Magnolia Avenue, here on behalf of Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. I have here with me tonight Chris Hardisty with Embry-Riddle and with Zev Cohen and Associates, Paul Monburger and Bobby Ball to answer any questions. I just wanted to go through a little bit of the history and how we got to this point here tonight, briefly, very briefly. As Dennis mentioned, this was approved in 2008. It received unanimous approvals throughout the process. This is for the 77.5-acre Research Park. The Plan-Master Development Agreement actually has minor amendments, major amendments, and this being the tree preservation element, not being into one of those categories, has to go through the same rezoning process. So that's why it's categorized as a rezoning, even though it's really a nuanced issue within the PMD related to the tree preservation issues. And going back to the PMD issue, the Plan-Master Development, that is a zoning category that is very conceptual in nature. And at the time of the original PMD, there was a tree survey done and the idea within the Master Development Agreement was to replace, or I'm sorry, shift trees within the site, relocate trees within the site. And what has happened since that time, as we've gone through Phase One engineering work and things, we've realized, the engineers have realized, that it is really not practicable to shift these trees within the site, that the clustering of the trees, what you'd have is a loss of a lot of the trees based on, you know, getting one tree out, would it negatively impact other trees? And so what we've come up with is by going to the land development code, your replacement standards, integrating those into the PMD. And so we have three options for these replacement of specimen trees. As Dennis mentioned, the $500 contribution, the replacement trees on-site or the purchasing of off-site property and placement of trees there. I will say in terms of, this has no impact on the buffer surrounding the property, the PMD property. In fact, the intention is to replace trees that are lost from the site work within the buffer area to the extent practical. So this would actually improve the buffer areas in terms of having that buffer between this area and adjacent properties. And so that would be the first option. And as Dennis also mentioned, from the historic tree standpoint, you know, this gives Embry-Riddle the flexibility for contemplated for preservation now, but that's not to say that other historic trees could not be saved on-site. It's just a matter of getting the engineering work done, going through the process and really, at the end of the day, making sure that this site is positioned so that when tenants come in, we can have quick turnaround on development and get, you know, realize the 2,000 jobs that are contemplated for this property overall with average wages of $45,000 a year. So that is why we're here. We're happy to answer any questions from myself or anyone else with our team.
Any questions? Tracy?
Just off-site mitigation. I take it we're talking about off-site somewhere in the city?
Yes.
Okay. And is there, how would you, would there be a deed restriction on something you buy so it's in perpetuity? That it stays preserved? I mean, how does, that's the only one, I'm not sure how it works. For how long does it work?
Well, I haven't gone through that process. I would presume if you're, if the university was going to buy a property off-site for the purpose of this tree preservation, there would probably be some conservation easement associated with it because it would be in perpetuity, the trees.
They would have to maintain the amount of trees that never mitigate.
Sure.
Right. I mean, that's the one I see you at least using, but I am, would we need, since this is happening now, would we need to include that kind of language about a conservation easement in perpetuity?
I mean, I think that... It's a good idea.
Okay. And y'all will figure out the language?
Yeah, it's just that any trees that are planted off-site, you want to make sure that they're maintained forever.
Right, that that stay, that's not something they turn around and sell and have to mitigate it somewhere else or, not turn around, but you know what I'm...
Okay, but even if they resell, there's going to be an easement conserving that.
Right, a conservation easement in perpetuity. Is that, would that be all right, Mr. Stowers?
Yes.
Okay.
And that really was...
In the city, in the city. Oh yeah, I want it in the city. We don't want this somewhere else.
That Embry-Riddle has the option, the three, whichever one that they want to use. But that stipulation that you're talking about just goes along with that one option.
Right, right. And I mean, I think the flexibility is great, but I just want to make sure that option works well.
So that you have options with it.
Right.
Any other questions? No, we have one speaker, Mr. Nicholson?
Johnson 413 North Granville Avenue. In perpetuity is how many years, Tracy?
Till we all die.
Okay, because there is an in perpetuity that lasted for what, 20 years? So their in perpetuity on this property has already expired. So when you say in perpetuity, you're not talking about a long period of time. Secondly, $500 a tree. You're talking, there's 200 trees here on the property. A large number of them are specimen trees that they say should be saved, 193, I believe it is. They're only going to save 63. So you've got 90% of the trees are going to wipe out. I think I heard sort of kind of maybe that the buffer zone is going to be sacrosanct, that they're not going to take any of the trees from that. If that indeed is true, because there were several people here from the neighborhood that were promised the last time that they would have this buffer, so I'm wondering whether any of these trees that are going to be removed are in the buffer. Because if they're in the buffer, I can understand them being upset. They were presuming that the center, where all those ditches were in the buildings, the trees would have been removed. So they're not really concerned about the center area. They're concerned about the buffer because they live just south of it. So I'm also concerned about the south end and the eastern end that buffer the neighborhoods. So if nothing's going to be removed from those two buffer areas, I'm relatively not happy. I just don't like the idea of $500 and I don't like the idea of losing this canopy if they can maneuver. And I think you did say that they would try to maneuver around it and save as many as they could. So if they can do that, because you don't need exactly square parking lots. You don't need exactly square drainage areas. So if they can save them, it's the best of both worlds. Because we need the park. Thank you.
Would you like to address the buffer zone?
I just wanted to clear up any confusion from earlier comments tonight on the buffer area... area. This, the research park is south of the cemetery there. This is unrelated to the buffer discussion or buffer references earlier this evening, which was related to a county issue with the university. This research park, the buffers within this have nothing to do with that buffer area related to the university. And again, no trees will be removed-
From the landscape buffer that's parked.
And in addition to that, when we talk about exceeding the Land Development Code, that is, replacement trees would be planted within that buffer area, hopefully, and that would be in excess of what is required for the land, for the buffer area.
Right. Board ready for your discussion.
You know, I'm not in favor of removing a lot of trees, but sometimes they get in the way. This research park is going to be, like, it is going to put days on the beach on the map. We can plant more trees, but we can't get more research parks like Emory Riddle's going to have. So, and they're willing to mitigate the trees, you know, and the loss of the trees, and I'm all for it.
Anyone else?
Well, I think it's an excellent idea, and I think to belabor the vote would kind of be a waste. Let's, let's vote.
Okay.
Res zoning planned master development, Emory Riddle Aeronautical University Technology Park, tree preservation development, 2011-090.
With the additional language, conservation easement for the off-site.
With additional language, comment on that. Second motion.
All right.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ms. Washington, we're ready for item number eight.
Item number eight, rezoning planned commercial development, Teledyne ODI Inc., DEV 2011-090.
Okay, we are for staff.
Thank you. Dennis Mozak, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. This is a request to rezone 9.78 acres of land located at 2275 Mason Avenue in Daytona Beach, amending the, it says amending the existing planned commercial development, which it's not. It's amending the zoning to commercial plan development and expanding the building square footage and modifying the timetable for development. Well, that's actually not, that's not correct either, but I get it right. Okay. The property location is on Williamson Boulevard. That's why I was on the wrong location, is on Williamson Boulevard, which is north of Dunn and south of Mason. The future land use of the property is general industrial. The current zoning of the property is R2A multifamily. The proposed zoning of the property is PCD, planned commercial development. Teledyne ODI PCD is a 52,500 square foot building. It is a research and development facility. Proposed uses include, these are uses that are generally consistent with a general industrial location, but I've got them listed here for you. They include things such as bakeries, assembly and processing, wholesaling, bottle plants, and very similar things. The architectural design of the building, the applicant has requested a deviation from our standards for architectural design for the building. As you recall, just recently, we have passed certain requirements for design standards along some of the major city thoroughfares. This particular building, as presented, fails to meet all of the requirements for the design standards. One of the reasons that the applicant is hoping to keep this particular type of design, it does match up with the existing Teledyne Gas and Oil Building, which is located just north of the site, also on Williamson. The request for the architectural deviation would be a waiver request from the Land Development Code. I've got an overview of the site for you, and I wanted to kind of show you a couple of interesting characteristics about this site. The site is laid out as a little bit of an odd shape. It's laid out like that. The Teledyne Gas and Oil is actually located over here. There is a proposal to do a cross-connection between the two properties across this, there's a drainage easement going across over there, but connecting, connecting the properties, keeping traffic off of Williamson when possible. A major portion of the site, I'd say it's probably a good 35% of the site is actually, falls under a Florida Power and Light Transmission Easement. This makes it very difficult to meet the proper numbers as far as landscaping. You just, you can't plant the trees in there that you might normally have to plant on your property in your, in your site development. That's, this is the location of the drainage easement that runs parallel between the two buildings. If you take a look, some of the parking is actually located in the drainage easement. The applicant has informed staff that there may be a need to modify the plan as presented to be able to satisfy St. John's on that drainage easement. If a plan does get modified in the future, staff is going to take a look at the plan, and if it's something that can be done administratively based on a PD agreement, we'll be able to make that modification. If it's something that requires a little bit more substantial modification, we'll come back to the planning board. If it's a greater change, it'd be required to go to the planning board and city commission for approval. But staff has not yet seen the plan, so we don't exactly know what type of level of the change we're going to be looking at. This is a picture of the drainage ditch between the two properties. As far as landscaping, one of the, one of the requests, waiver requests for this particular site has to do with the requirement for the landscape buffer at the property perimeters. There is a requirement for scenic setback buffer, but the scenic setback buffer can't be extended into this Florida Power easement, Florida Power easement. Also, you can't do the perimeter landscaping along these sides where I showed you before, it just can't be done. So there is a waiver request to put in the required perimeter landscaping. However, the applicant has stated that he will be taking all of the landscape material that was going to be going in there, and he'd be including it in other parts of the site to make up for any lost landscaping through those Florida Power easements. All right, as far as landscape designs, there are modifications to the property perimeter, Article 18, Section 2.4, because of the site constraints and because of the existing FPL easement, prevents the installation of the required trees and plant material in the perimeter landscaping. And again, it does not relieve the applicant of the requirement to install the required landscape material on other portions of the site.
Is that the same requirement as scenic fall under perimeter, or is that a different waiver?
Well, it's actually worded a little bit different in our Land Development Code. The scenic identifies that there may be things such as the Florida Power and Light-
Okay.
And it would allow staff to administratively make that difference.
Okay. Yeah, I knew, I just didn't want to make, I wanted to-
Yeah. But the rest of it, we don't have that opportunity.
Okay.
As far as the recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the request to rezone the subject property to planned commercial development. The rezoning request is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city commission on March 7th, 2012, and March 21st, 2012 for second reading and a public hearing. An affirmative vote of six is required by the planning board members to recommend approval to the city commission.
Any other questions from staff?
Just a quick one. The 50-foot scenic setback that they do have, are they just like clear-cutting and then planting all new, or are they actually enhancing the existing vegetation?
I'll have him speak a little bit further on that, but we're going to be making sure that, we're going to take a look at what's existing over there and saving as much as possible and being able to incorporate that in the plan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Joe Hopkins. My address is 100 Marina Point Drive, Daytona Beach.
I think Dennis has done a great job explaining this. This is a great opportunity to have Teledyne Ocean Design expand their facility. We don't have any oil resources around here, so to have an R&amp;D facility of this magnitude in this community is a blessing in itself. The site is extremely constrained, as you saw, the pieces and bits that we really don't have use of. I don't want, I just want to clarify one thing. When Dennis said that we may have to modify the site, what we're looking to do is possibly just shift the site southward a little bit so that we don't have to close off as much of the existing drainage ditch that exists on our north boundary line. It wouldn't be a modification of the architecture, it really is just sliding the plan just a little bit further south. So I don't want you to be concerned that we're going to pull a rabbit out of the hat with a modification of any magnitude. 85 research and development jobs, it's a great project, and I would appreciate your support.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, I've just got a comment. I just think, I don't even know why they chose that site. You got that ditch, and then you've got the electrical thing, so they vary a little bit from the LDC code on the side of the thing. It's going to look perfect there.
Yeah, I think so, too, yeah.
And then plus the jobs that it's bringing, and now, this company wants to expand with no oil and gas resources in the state of Florida. It wants to expand to Daytona, and these, I understand from all the articles in the paper, these 85 jobs could turn into 150 at $65,000 entry level and up. So we've got, we've got a good tax base, we've got people that are going to be buying homes and living here. It's just, it's another great opportunity, just like the Emory Riddle Research Park we're seeing. We're seeing some positive things from all the seed sowing that they've been doing for years.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, Tracy had a comment that I plan to address. With regard to the 50-foot buffer, there's another constraint there. The city has a 25-foot utility easement that occupies half of the buffer that we're allowed to plant. And there's a request to install a 20-inch line across the front of the whole site.
Yeah, I saw that.
So it's going to be, we plan to put the same quantity of plants in a more constrained area. It's going to be tight, but, and as far as vegetation that's out there right now, very, very limited. There's some small diameter pines, but other than that, it's pretty bare.
I think whatever you do would be great, you know. I mean, I really do.
If you're familiar with the, if you're familiar with the facility to the north, they're existing, we did some contour grading and landscaping to match, so there's a lot of complements between the two properties.
Yeah, the only thing I kind of hate, I guess, is the architectural, I don't know why you couldn't put a break in that long.
Yeah, I mean, I like this, but that, yeah, I guess why, that was going to be my question, I'm glad you brought that up. I didn't mean to cut you, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
The only thing I have to mind about that is we put in those, what, a couple months ago, on the power and the load, that we put in, in fact, we changed this line all the time.
Right.
And, you know, that's very distinct on 92 or something, or an international statement. But you have the work to go out there. You go out, you cut in, and it's-
I pass there, I don't know how many times a week.
I do, I see it pretty often.
People going around looking at the buildings. This is just different.
And that's the design that works for them.
And it matches what they, I mean, I think it will, I think it will make a corporate identity. Normally, I would agree, to me, it's a long monotonous building, but it's next to another one, and it will-
Well, maybe they would be both of them.
And it will, no, it will make for a corporate identity, carrying that theme through.
And that's not a thing for me, to have a building there with 800 people inside. I don't care about some of that stuff.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve rezoning planned commercial development, Teledyne ODI Incorporated Development, 2011-090.
Including both code waivers.
Including?
Both code waivers requested. Oh, it does it, that's right, that's right.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I think you ought to have a meeting here that measures the ayes, and then we know it really matters.
It's, you know, it's a pleasure to be able to see stuff move in, and especially positive things, you know.
Two meetings in a row.
Oh my goodness, it's not minimum wage stuff.
Item number nine, let's go.
Item number nine, special use permit, Our Lady of Lords, DEV 2011-110.
Yes, staff.
Thank you. Dennis Mozak, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. This final item is a request by Joe Hopkins on behalf of Our Lady of Lords Church located at 201 University Boulevard for a special use permit to operate a carnival or Italian festival on the church grounds from April, excuse me, from Thursday, April 19th to Sunday, April 22nd, 2012, and from Thursday, April 11th to Sunday, April 14th, 2013. This is a request for two years for the, for the festival event. The site is located at 201 University Boulevard. The future land use of the site is schools and church, and the current zoning of the site is R1A single family. I put up a location of the church for you to take a look at. We did provide them in the staff reports showing where some of the facilities are going to actually be set up. The 50-foot buffer is along over here, this, along this residential area, parking up over here, kernel rides are set up over here and actually in this section over here and over here, so away from the residential areas. The special use criteria, this is out of Section 6.3 of Article 4, to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, which it is, it's not to be detrimental to adjacent properties or neighborhoods. The conditions that are included, address those. Parking and access is addressed, 50-foot buffer provided for residents to the east, sponsored by a semi-public entity, in this case, the church, and meet the notice requirements, which they have done. For a carnival review criterion, this is in Article 17, Section 2.23, off-street parking being provided contiguous to the event, 10-day max for the event, and it does meet that requirement, rides and activities not in close proximity adjoining residents, limitations on the operating hours, which these are the same operating hours that they've had for the past couple of years, and then again, sponsorship by the, by the semi-public entity, the Our Lady of the Lords Church. Additional, I've got a list of all of the conditions of approval that have been moving forward and seem to be growing each time we go through these. Some of them include, the formal ones include portable toilets being provided, no overnight camping or sleeping on the church site, which had been a problem in the past, music not to exceed 70 decibels, which is the city standard for foreign noise, parking attendants must be high school age or older, anyone under 18 must be supervised by the church staff, police department coordination, and a walkthrough inspection by the fire department. Additional comments this time around that have come up, one of the concerns from one of the residents at a last year's city commission meeting discussed some of the vehicles that were parked in the 50-foot buffer. The additional language adds that any vehicle that is parked in that 50-foot buffer cannot have the engines running during the festival non-operational hours, so at night they have to shut down. Contact name and cell number of the required neighborhood liaison has been provided. There were some complaints that there was a contact person, but when they tried to get ahold of the church, they were getting the, you know, overnight hours, they were getting voicemails, and they weren't able to contact somebody. So we do have a direct contact name and telephone number to be able to, if anybody has a problem in the middle of the night, they'd be able to contact. And then also a requirement, requiring city stormwater inspection before and after the event. This verifies if there's any illegal stormwater use and requires a cleanup. We've had problems of people dumping things into the city stormwater. It's not good for us, it's not good for anybody, and the cost is, it's pretty significant. So that was another condition that was added by the utilities department. One note I wanted to point out for you on the staff report, page two, and Mr. Hopkins actually pointed this out to me, staff report states at the top that the church will hire police to monitor illegal traffic in the neighborhood. This is something that had happened before in the past, it was eliminated- It was eliminated, I don't know exactly how many years ago it was eliminated, and it hasn't been done. It's not one of the conditions of approval, and how it got in there, it was probably just a leftover from a previous staff report, but the church will not be hiring the police to, to do that. As far as a recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the special use permit request with conditions permitting the operation of a carnival on the church grounds from Thursday, April nineteenth to Sunday, April twenty-second in two thousand twelve, and from Thursday, April eleventh to Sunday, April fourteenth, two thousand thirteen. A majority vote of the planning board members present in voting is required to recommend approval to the city commission, and this is tentatively scheduled to go to the city commission on March seventh.
Any questions?
I was gonna ask you, I think we have this enough over the years, and we tweaked it and made some changes, and they've been very good about taking care of this. Any question I have, I came to my mind, is the city protected against anything happening on the premises there, if it's any rides or anything, and are they protected against the liability of the city?
I'm not exactly sure. I would assume that this, this festival.
I'm assuming the operator probably would have insurance, but he might be able to answer that.
Mr. Hopkins?
For the record, Joe Hopkins, one hundred Marina Point Drive. This is my fourth year of servicing Our Lady of Lords with this request. There is a provision, there's a rider provision for liability that the church has, and then the carnival group himself are self-insured. The city, to the best of my knowledge, wouldn't have any liability whatsoever within the perimeter of the property.
I have just, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I had a question about the emergency number provided. Number one, do you just pass that out on a flyer or cards to the neighbors so they have it at night? How do they know to call this number? Is it posted somewhere? Because it doesn't do any, or is it going to be on the message machine if you call in after hours and you need to re-
That's kinda what I presume, because people try a couple.
Right. Well, see, like at my dental office, when it's after hours, it says if this is an emergency, Doctor so-and-so can be reached at such-and-such. But there needs to be a way to get that number to people who actually call at eleven o'clock at night, because if it's in a staff report or something sitting around and they don't have it, it doesn't do anybody any good.
Don't they have, I think, I remember from one of the other times, they have a homeowners' association in there that they do newsletters, don't they?
Right. Just as long as the church is actually doing, making an outreach to it.
Because the guy before them, that was president of the HOA, he was very involved with negotiations with the church and stuff like that, and they had a newsletter, so I'd say if they gave that to him in the newsletter, they would have all have it.
I would add, though, if you do have a message machine, to have that on during the festival hours, you know, if there's a problem, so-and-so can be reached.
This is actually an employee of the church, and that's his cellphone, so he's in charge of the carnival. So it's a direct contact, and I'll, I'll talk with him about putting that in.
Yeah, just, just so someone can reach it. And then, what happens if in the next two years, he's no longer an employee? Since we have his name, there's no, this isn't like a rezoning thing, right? If he leaves or dies, we're not, they can substitute?
We, we put the point of contact, correct. I mean, we put the point of contact in there, because we know who it is this year. In the event something happens, but.
Okay.
I've been listening to this request for so long, that the guy before this guy?
I know.
Mr. Chairman, I, I did have one, one thing I wanted to bring to your attention, in addition to what Dennis brought up about us hiring police. We do have a walkthrough with public safety. The, the fire department comes out to the site before we open up to the public to evaluate safety routes and things of that sort. Under item number two, just a point of clarification, you know, we carve these, these conditions out over the years, and this one, when I, when I read through it, I'm setting myself up for a fall. It says that we cannot set up or take down. The objective of this condition was that we don't have any activity, any extracurricular activity during non-operational hours, or do any, any maintenance and things of that sort on the equipment during non-operational hours. But in reality, we do have setup time before the carnival starts, and we have some breakdown time after the carnival is over. And literal interpretation of condition number one and number two would state that we don't have the ability to set up outside of the hours of operation, or take down outside of the hours of operation. That's not the intent. What I would like to do is, under condition number two, just strike out the part that says set up or take down. Generally, the setup is about three to four days prior to the event, and the take down is about two to three days after the event. I would just ask for a reasonable amount of time to set up and take down outside of the carnival event itself. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
But you wouldn't want where they could take it down that night, now, after hours.
We have, we have. Correct, it's in there.
So it still can't be before eight AM?
Or be taking it down if the carnival's continuous. They're gonna put it up one time at the start, and then they're gonna take it down when the carnival, when the time period's over.
Yeah, but the whole idea-
There's been a problem with maintenance and cleanup.
I, I, this is, was the way the condition was drafted last year, and we, I mean, and I just, it's just a point of clarification, please recognize that there is setup and take down beyond the hours of operation. So if you, if.
How long did you say it took to set it up?
Generally, a couple of days, three, three days. They arrive with these trailers, and then they start setting them up. Takes about three days to set up.
So it's not necessarily the hours, it's the days?
That's correct.
It's the dates, not the hours, as Carrie just said.
Instead of being just Thursday to Sunday, you might need Monday through Wednesday, but it won't be before eight AM or after ten PM.
Right. Yeah, that's the thing. You can't extend those hours.
I agree.
So the dates need to change.
Well, the-
You did address setup and breakdown.
Right, setup and breakdown.
That's a separate issue.
Yeah.
Okay. What do you got? I'd made notes, and most of them were cleared through here, the minute I saw it, I started to make notes from the years that we've dealt with this. My question is, well, a couple of questions. Are we, is it being, are we extending Friday and Saturday nights? You know, we did this in the past till midnight. We're not?
It's a different, it's, it's till eleven o'clock on, on the Friday and Saturday. That was.
Right. So we're, we're going to continue to do it till eleven?
That's what's your question.
Okay. Second thing, in the past, we had, one of the items that neighbors complained about sleeping on-site, which was covered here, but they had individuals that ended up in their driveways, they were sleeping in the neighborhood. Will this, these walkthroughs that the police are doing, what's gonna hamper the individuals from going into the neighborhoods and sleeping? Is there anything set for that? Will they monitor, is it just the grounds themselves? The walkthroughs, is it just the grounds themselves?
For public safety, yes.
All right.
The condition number eight was, was set up to address this, and at one point, I think they did reside in campers and so forth on the property, and there was a little after-hour issues and things of that sort. We specifically prohibit any overnight except for a watchman.
Right.
And Kathy, to be honest with you, I don't believe we had any, any proliferation into the neighborhood with people sleeping and cars and things of that sort. I don't recall any issue like that, as long as I've been involved, but I, I'm.
I think it was, if I remember, it was an issue of some of the people walking through the neighborhood late at night, and they were going back to their campers in their trailers that were on-site, so that's why they did away with the campers and the trailers, so that there wasn't after-hour parties, and they happened to be walking around the neighborhood. And that took care of it.
Okay. Then, the one last item. A question came up, I think it was last year, maybe it was year before, that dealt with the parking on the grass, and the units were on the driveway. Moving right along. The individuals were parking on the grass, and the parking lot was used for the activities. Did we reverse that, or are we doing it the same way?
No, there's a, the southerly portion of the parking lot of the church is used for parking, and then the northern section, in the exhibit, there's a, there's a site plan that shows you where the parking's gonna be designated. It's, there is carnival activities on some of the paved areas, but there's also designated parking that's paved.
Okay.
And then there's another section that's grass, that is for overflow parking as well.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? We have one speaker for, Mr. Bob Carr, and he might be able to shed some light on some of this, too.
Good evening. My name is Bob Carr. I live at three oh four Waverly Circle, and my property abuts the church, and I've been here every year since, I think, two thousand and one, so I think I've been here as often as most of you have. Last year's carnival went well, actually. They complied with everything. The, let me touch on the parking issue that you just did about the, or mentioned about the parking in the grass. There's no problem coming in and off of university, because you're coming into the main church parking lot. The problem, a couple of years ago, they set up rides. The parking lot is designed where you go down, you loop around, and you leave. They blocked it, so that you went in, and then everybody had to back up, and if somebody was behind you, it just became a disaster, and there was zero chance of an emergency vehicle getting in. That was corrected, and I've got a comment here to insert that language back in. It is in the plan that Joe prepared, it is not in the conditions here, and I'll mention that, just inserting that. The other problem on the other side was Halifax. There's a paved parking lot there, and it has divided ingress, an entrance lane, and an exit lane. That was all totally blocked off, and people just randomly drove in across the sidewalk and into the grass. That was eliminated. They've now put some, a temporary construction fence, and now what happens is the traffic goes in that divided entrance, and then they just follow the traffic cones, they loop into the grass, they loop around, and then they go out paved exit, so they're not sitting there spinning dirt, tearing up the right-of-way, breaking the sidewalks. All that's been eliminated, so as far as the parking issues, that, you know, that is resolved. As far as the overnight people, that was eliminated. In earlier years, they actually had a campground set up there, and there was a lot of crime in the neighborhood. They were breaking into trucks and everything else. They eliminated the campground. In recent year, there've been a couple incidents where people have been seen coming in, they sneak in, get into a concession stand or something of that nature. I doubt there's anything more the church or anybody else can do is, if you see it, or if there is a problem, call the police. But other than that, I don't think last year, the last couple of years, there've been, you know, any, any problems to the neighborhood. You've seen the people sneak in, but they're quiet about it, and so it, they get away with it. A couple of quick things. One is that on the parking, ingress and egress, it states that the parking will come in off of university and Halifax. What I would propose on, this is on page four, item D, and then another area, is adding the language that access from university and North Halifax Avenue, inserting the words "using existing paved entrance" and "access." That's what this board first imposed several years ago, presented to the city commission, they adopted it, and it's been that way. For some reason, that language was just omitted. The plan does show that, but the language in the condition was omitted and should be reinserted to show that the paved parking entrances will be, will be used. The fifty-foot buffer is listed on the staff report as, on one section as being along the north boundary, and on another section as being along the east boundary, and in fact, it's on both, the north and the east boundary. This plan, again, is consistent, but there's some problems with the consistency in the staff report, and I'll give a copy of this to the staff so that in future years, it'll all tie together, but I don't see a problem with it here. The operating hours, the question was, as far as setup and take down, on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the operating hours are eight AM to ten, eight to ten on Thursday, eight to eleven on Friday, eight to eleven on Saturday, and then it drops back, eight to ten on Sunday. However, they usually shut down about six or seven on Sunday as the crowd thins out, and they start dismantling, because they're anxious to leave. The solution that I see as far as the setup and take down, and I've got some language here, would be to just add something that says that the operating hours that I've just discussed are approved, and that operating hours for the non-festival days, this is your setup and take down, would be from eight AM to seven PM. Staying up till nine or ten o'clock at night, listening to sledgehammers beating on rides, I don't think is necessary if they can't assemble the rides between, in the daylight hours, then, so I would propose that be in there. And that if you wish to set specifics, set up and take down dates, you could add another sentence that says approved non-festival activities, arrival and setup shall begin no earlier than, say, Monday preceding the festival dates, and conclude the take down and departure no later than Tuesday following the festival. Now, they occasionally show up Saturday, Saturday night, Sunday, just whenever they come from wherever they were. They've been known to show up at three in the morning, they're dropping semi-trucks, they're beating them loose to get them to go down, and that problem did not exist last year, but every year prior to that, they started rolling in at, whenever they drove from their last ride. That problem did not exist last year, and I think if we added this language that says that you can pull in and do what you want between seven AM and, or eight AM and seven PM, then I think that'll, you know, solve that problem. And, and I'd put in here that they arrive on, starting on Monday, maybe make it Saturday, because some, usually some early stragglers will show up, early arrivals, I should say, will show up maybe Saturday afternoon, drop some equipment, do a few repairs, and then they're gone, and then on Sunday is when it's, but we could just put, that they can start coming in on Saturday, and then be gone by the following Tuesday. In most cases, to be honest, they're going quick.
Problem is they came in and just parked their truck, because they were coming off of the jobs, would that be a problem?
No, as long as they, as long as they come during the daytime, that's why.
As long as they do it in the hours, that we don't, isn't it okay?
Oh, absolutely. That's what I say, any, any days you want, sure. I was saying Saturday is a good day, I mean, if you want to have it starting for the Saturday before.
Yeah.
And that would cover it.
Yeah, that would do it.
Okay. Yeah, obviously, they're not gonna show up two weeks early for a carnival. No. Okay. Oh, there was a question on the vehicles parking within the fifty-foot right-of-way that, I was here and presented this to the city commission, and what happened, it was a beer truck with a bad refrigeration unit, and basically, the belts, seals, bearings, it was just about coming apart, and all night long, there was, there was no sleeping. That thing just turned on, ran for twenty minutes, turned off for five, came squealing on, and so when this was presented to the commission, the agreement at that point was that they would, one, not have a defective equipment like that, and two, that refrigerated unit such as that would be moved away from the residences. The way the language here in the staff, or in the conditions, item number seven, just says that everything shuts down within the fifty-foot buffer at night, and in the past, historically, it's, everything shuts down at night. At eleven o'clock, everything shuts down, they leave. The way this is worded, anything outside the buffer can stay on all night, and that's, that's not it. It's just a language problem. I don't think that's what anybody wants, and so, I've got some proposed language here. I think Joe took exception with the fact that it, and I can just read it, it's three lines, it just says- three lines. It just says, "No vehicles, rides, generators or other mechanical or sound equipment will be operated during the festival's non-operating hours, including the periods between the hours of, uh, 7:00 PM and 8:00 AM on the non-carnival setup and takedown days." So basically, um, that eliminates everything mechanical during the night hours, which is what everyone said. Now, they, uh, two years ago, they brought that refrigeration unit on. Uh, it's a, a beer truck that isn't being used and they bring it and it provides the refrigeration for, for everything, for the food, the liquid, the beverages, everything, which is fine, except it had a bad refrigeration unit and nobody slept for four days and nobody could do anything about it. Um, so that was the reason that the city commission said, "Well, can you just move it to the far edge?" And so, that's it. We just say move it around the corner of the building and everybody's happy. I don't think that, um, we probably needed to be in here. I think we can work this out with Joe this year and if there's a problem, you know, we'll let somebody know, but it would just be a matter that, uh, that there would be nothing and we can just say, except for a refrigeration unit that will be located so as not to disturb the neighbors. The police, they mentioned the police department doing, being responsible for parking and supervision and hiring of them. That was about, as I recall, five or six years ago, I think they, there were problems. And about five or six years ago, those got resolved with some conditions that were imposed. At that point, uh, it seemed an unnecessary expense to impose on the church to have unnecessary patrols. So at that point, the mandate was eliminated and the cost. And at that point, the church just assumed the responsibility. They'll check the neighborhoods if they see that there's a problem or if somebody were to call the contact person with a problem, they'll arrange with the police to ticket the vehicle or whatever's necessary. There hasn't been a problem in five years since, uh, since that took, so I, uh, so there would be no requirement. I think that just came off an old staff report. Um, there was one other. Oh, the last thing was the, um, the noise item and that was item nine on the conditions. "Music shall not exceed a decibel of 70 so as not to disturb surrounding residences." Um, the last I recall, and I checked all my notes, the last provision I can find where the planning commission made a recommendation to the city commission that was carried forward was language stating that, um, there'd be no amplified sound music or live bands except traditional music incidental to the carnival midway, uh, which is the little kid sounds and the small speakers all around the midway, um, with minimum volume levels, level so as not to disturb surrounding residences and that there would be no amplified sound during non-operating hours of the carnival, particularly during setup and takedown. The reason was that in years past, the carnival would be setting up during the day and they had a sound system you wouldn't believe. It would put most football stadiums to shame because there was music that, uh, when I left after lunch, uh, I was almost three blocks away on Atlantic Avenue and I could hear it. And, uh, that has been, uh, pretty much eliminated during the take-up and takedown based on the language here that you can't have the sound. That language is not here. It just says, "Music shall not exceed 70 decibels." And so that's why we've put that you don't need to be blasting music at any decibels during, you know, the assembly, the days ahead and after. And during, uh, the festival, in the past, there have been three approved, uh, conditions by, I believe, uh, by both the planning, uh, commission and the city commission and that was one, uh, year, uh, there was soft background music, amplified background music allowed in the dining area, uh, for, for background dining, uh, ambiance. And, uh, there was no problem. Uh, another year, it was modified to allow a youth spirit band to play and they played in the afternoon and there was absolutely no problem. Uh, last year, the festival had a live swing band, uh, playing, uh, on Sunday afternoon for a few hours and again, that was no problem. In fact, everybody was opening their window, listening to the music. So those kinds of things, uh, whether they're within or without the, uh, the noise ordinance really aren't a problem, haven't been a problem and nobody's objecting, uh, when those occur. I'm not sure, uh, how those will be included as an exception, but, uh, the language I proposed is just very simple. "Music shall not exceed, uh, noise levels established by city codes for the zoning district." So whatever the noise ordinance is, that's it. Now, if these exceed it, I, nobody's going to complain because quite frankly, we open the windows and listen to the music. Uh, but to say that the 70-decibel limit, now the city, I've got the city noise ordinance and it provides in a residential district, you take the sound that's there, the background noise, 10 decibels above that is what's allowed. Now, if there's a problem with measurement and whatever, then you can go to 60 decibels as a maximum. Uh, in a commercial district, it's 65 and in an industrial district, you get up to 75. There is an exception for special events and these are the specified, such as your, I guess, Pike Week and such as that. They can have special events such as that, I guess. And, uh, those are by, uh, resolution of the city commission. Um, I'm not aware, I guess there's one for 70 decibels. I've not been able to find that and, uh, I think to say that it's, it wa, it is 70 is excessive. You, I mean, you're approaching the industrial park level and to say that you can do that up until 11:00 o'clock at night is a little much. I would rather just say it's whatever the city codes say and then work from there. And again, last year, there was, uh, a problem only with the, uh, oh, well, there was no problem with the band and the other. They did have one problem. Instead of the small speakers for the midway, as in the past, they had some monsters out there blasting rock music and I could actually listen to my windows rattling. One of the neighbors called me over and said, "Next year when you're down there, you better remember this." And I go, "Yes, ma'am, I will." And I'm, hope she watches the tape. Uh, she took me around the back of her house. She's got an aluminum, a metal shed and we listened to the tool. The shed was vibrating and the tools inside were vibrating and you could hear it inside her house. So she was listening to the music on one side and her shed vibrating on the other side. That's how loud it was. And, nothing. So, I, that's why I would say just, it's within the, the sound level should be within that. If we have a contact person, I trust we won't have a problem. As I say, last year was amazingly good, except for the blasting noise. That was really the only thing. The other things have come and gone over the years, but...
But now we have, we have a contact person and, and most of the conversation that we've had, everything is going along good.
One, one year we had a contact person. Everything went absolutely...
And they've got the contact person taken care of and so if there's a problem, I think, then that would be the, the person to call.
Assuming he, assuming he's as effective as that lovely lady was three years ago, I believe it was. She, she was out there patrolling with a vengeance and you didn't even have to call her. She was usually like, "Oh, I'm already on this." So she was...
So it sounds like it's working good.
It is and, uh, but I would, like I say, those items that I mentioned here, and I can give this, the language that I mentioned here, if, uh, if you find any of that or, um...
Well, you've talked to, uh, Joe about the language in there, you said? Mr. Hoffmann, you've talked to him and he didn't have any problem with any of your problems?
I'll let him respond.
He didn't have any problem with any of the suggestions or did you have problems? You do have problems.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to...
Anyway, that's it, if you want to...
Okay.
You want to answer? Yeah, because we've been, we've been 30 minutes on this. Yeah. 30 minutes.
Um, we've spent a lot of time crafting the conditions of this agreement and, and, you know, when we start playing on semantics, uh, I, I, and I'm the first to admit it because I brought one up to your attention about setup and takedown, but the comment about driveway access off of paved driveways is already provided for. There's an exhibit that's attached to the special use agreement that shows that the access is there. So, University Boulevard, the only place we can access the properties on the paved driveways. On Halifax, there's a condition, condition number 13, that says that parking along Halifax Drive shall be limited to ensure and maintain safety and pedestrian, uh, maintain vehicle and pedestrian safety. And we crafted that last year. We, because we were concerned about vehicles pulling out over the sidewalk and things of that sort. That was the intent of this provision, is to use and limit access to the driveway. So, we're covered. The operation, um, with the motors running and things of that sort, there's absolutely no way that we can have a carnival and not have refrigeration units and things of that sort. We agreed to move them, um, to, to cut them off at, at, at the end of the operation, the end of the day.
Ten or eleven.
Right now, I think it says that the, that these vehicles can be parked within the 50-foot buffer, but they have to be turned off at night. Um, if you guys want to change something and just move them out of the 50-foot buffer, we can consider that. Um, it seemed to work pretty well. We have an incident, an incident that Mr. Carr has not forgotten about, the broken compressor that kept people up. Uh, we've been pretty vigilant in having good equipment out there. So I, I, I think we're covered. Um, if you guys want to consider changes, uh, we can do that. The, the 70-decibel that's provided for by code, uh, under this special use, it's been consistent in years past. Um, and I would like to keep these, these conditions as, as they are intact and request your approval, special use.
Boarding. Alex.
Um, I do think it would be helpful to do the, uh, not, the festival operating hours and then the non-operating hours. And then you just take out the setup, the setup and takedown as Joe recommended. And so you could put both the hours in item number one and then take setup and takedown out of item number two. Um, I do agree, I mean, a, a lot of that was overkill. I think it, you know, it's worked. I do know, sitting on the Main Street South A1A redevelopment board, I don't ever hear, I, I've never read it before, but I don't ever hear 70. I always hear, and Mr. Webster helped craft the ordinance and he's the chair and I always hear 65 during special events. So, I, I think just going to whatever the city code, and then there's no, no one has to worry if it's 65 or something, they just have the city code. If the police ever do get called out, they know what to go by.
So if the city code allows for 70, you would be willing to accept 70?
Yeah, it's whatever, if it, because this is an event, that way, we're not, we don't have to worry about it and it's already set in code. I do think that just...
That makes sense.
Yeah. If the special events allow 70 and this is an event, you know, it just takes it out of there. 60, it just gets it away.
Or it's 65 or whatever the code is.
Right, whatever the code is.
We'll cross-reference that with staff and take that recommendation.
Yeah, it's whatever the code is, I think, right?
Anyone else?
Motion to approve special use permit, Our Lady of Lords, DEV 2011-110, with the changes noted for non-operating, non-festival, or operating hours during non-festival days and, uh, decibel levels to meet city code.
Second. We have a motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much.
Going on to other business, Downtown Blue Road Redevelopment Area Board.
Downtown Blue Road Redevelopment Board met. Uh, the usual reports, the big discussion was on the flea market, possible expansion of the flea market. There was a, a really good report given by the flea market manager and farmer's market, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know who's going to ask.
I'm getting these looks and I'm trying to figure out, what did I say? Farmer's market. And, uh, the expansion of the farmer's market, um, possibly, um...
Who else here?
Larger expansion and, uh, structures. Uh, it was a good report from her, additional vendors wanting to come on board, um... And I'm, I'm going to be honest, I left my report and I don't remember whether it was approved or not. But it was an excellent report. In fact, it was an extra-long meeting discussing it.
The dog ate it.
The dog ate it.
The dog ate it.
All right.
I tried. Honestly, don't remember.
You made that, thank you.
Midtown Redevelopment Board.
She sounds more like Mr. Perry all the time.
Yes, I had the meeting on, uh, January 10th and the open up of the information. Uh, the, uh, co-chair presided, the actual officers, and this side is the chairperson and her is co-chair. And they had the introduction of new members, Dr. Irma K. Brown, River Gordon and Remy Two. Uh, staff of course, the other members, uh, okay, that's January 10th. Next, it's something different. They approved for, uh, to make minor adjustments, minor modifications to the parking lot at 7, 7:23. Dr. Murma dropped a phone, the parking lot is approved and, and they approved for the modification. And I gave the update to them and I, we just went to the apartment and that was it.
Okay.
Yes. And the meeting lasted, lasted one hour.
Well, that was good. Okay, Main Street South Atlantic.
Uh, we met Wednesday, January 11th. Actually, the big item, two big items. One, we had a report from Captain Hoffman, who I believe went to, I think he was also at the downtown board. He, I know, he was going to be hitting the redevelopment boards to let us know that the budget for extra police presence in the redevelopment areas runs out January 31st this month, my, next Tuesday.
Right.
Um, the, uh, what they are going to be doing is changing back to a full-time dedicated policing unit in the redevelopment areas, but what that means is they're coming from other places. They're now going to be dedicated and what has eaten it up, eaten up the budget, seems to be, um, the increased crime that has been hitting a number of the redevelopment areas, certainly the, the beachside one and special events. So, that, that is going to be a major shift in it. Uh, we heard a, and passed a temporary parking lot at 140 South Ocean Avenue and that meets the new guidelines that went through this board, uh, that was Gilbert Mayara. We are still discussing a possible text amendment to parking requirements in RDB5. The initial thing that, um, there, there are problems with the amount of parking required in that area that is leaving a number of properties just vacant because there's no way to meet the requirements at all. So we're working on that. And then we had the redevelopment projects update and then we had, um, quite a bit of discussion on the, the board. Um, oh, and we heard a presentation, by the way, on the ice rink and I'm sure you all have read that. Uh, as Dino said, "It's not often you can lose $50,000 and be considered a success." But it was. So anyway, the last thing that we did was, uh, address the HOBoards', um, discussion about extending Biketoberfest. Um, and the board actually by consensus was against that and we voted to have the board chair or the vice chair actually attend the HOBoard meeting on the 18th and speak to that exactly. We, there was a, people in the audience, both residents and businesses, who had spoken against that as well and so that was done from there.
All right, good. Next is public comments. We have one speaker, Mr. Nicholson. John, feel free to discuss item number eight that I failed to call you up about if you'd like, but...
John Nicholson, 413 Northern Granby Avenue. It's been, um, over three months. Uh, we've been working on this, I think, going on three or four years, land development code. Again, I would like to bring to your attention submerged lands, that, uh, it, it's something that should be discussed before it goes into the land development code. Floor area ratio, um, and hotel parking for, uh, along A1A. Uh, we've brought up one of the hoteliers, um, that a lot of their, uh, restaurant business is walk-up and so they're required to have parking even though they're, they're at... restaurant business is walk-up, and so they're required to have parking even though their, their guests are walking, either living in, in the hotel itself and a walk-up get. So they're getting double-dutyed on the, the parking. And lastly, landscaping. We require a lot of this little NHTZ landscaping. If you've ever gone over the International Bridge, take a look on the right and the left. All that landscaping that we required is no longer there, and it happens throughout the city. So I think it's something else that we should consider when we do the land development code. Thank you. Have a good night.
Seems like I've heard all over the board, John. Staff comments, Mr. Wall.
Mr. Hurd will be happy to know that we're going to discuss social service or overlay stuff next meeting. City commission had their, had their meeting last week, last Wednesday, in discussing the North Ridgewood overlay. Mr. Don got up and had some concerns about further restrictions and whatever, and city commission asked for staff to present that and discuss with you at our next available meeting. It was too late to get in this agenda, but we will be getting the exact direction once the minutes are finished and bringing that to you, at least for discussion. If not action, that's your next meeting.
I didn't want to hear it anymore.
Gosh, it disappeared. I started disappointing, we didn't get that tonight.
Yeah, right.
Well, we are ready for board member comments, so are there any?
I was just going to say, if you could hold it to March, because I'm not going to be here at the March Planning Board, I wouldn't mind kissing it.
No fair, no fair. I want to thank you all. It's been a very long meeting tonight, and I think it's been very good. We hurt a lot of people, and it's necessary we hurt. Thank you.
All right.
You're.